Oh yeah, go ahead. Yeah, just going to pull it out, that's fine. Yeah, trying to. Alright, that's all, there. There goes, okay, go ahead and try it.
Oh, just the, uh, the eight times itself.
It's a bunch of five thousand dollars.
Add two zeros.
I know, I know.
Ah, it doesn't need that. It's sufficient.
Along with the, there we go.
It's a good thing Charlie's here.
I guess I can't be late if the chairman's not as charitable.
So, someone told Charlie.
That's right, I've never been in the last meeting.
He was sick.
Yeah. It's in case of damage. Gee, Christmas. Somebody runs my dog on seat all the way down the block.
Oh, I know, I hate that.
I wonder if that was Pete. My son. I sat down there. Water dish. I did. Hey Mike, I wanted to match your truck.
Okay, it's time to call this meeting to order.
So much for your gavel.
Thank you, we appreciate, uh, appreciate everyone being here, uh, for our February twenty-third, Board of Supervisors meeting. Uh, if you will join me in the flag salute. And let's remember Pilot James Chavez and Deputy, uh, Scott Valentine in our moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, please be seated. Okay, let's start off this morning with Board of Supervisors matters, and I'll start with Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you for, uh, recognizing, uh, our fallen, uh, members of the Sheriff Department during the moment of silence. Uh, I did have the opportunity to attend the services for, uh, Pilot James Chavez and, uh, Deputy Scott Valentine and, uh, I really do have to commend the Sheriff's Department for, uh, rallying around their families, um, and also all of law enforcement for coming together to support, uh, the Tulare County Sheriff's Department in a very difficult time, so, uh, I hope that, uh, everyone is doing okay and, uh, I wish, uh, I hope that, uh, the families of those who've been lost and, um, those who've been lost are, uh, happy in heaven looking down upon the Sheriff's Department from above. Also had the opportunity to attend on Saturday the dedication of the Veteran Resource Center in the Tulare Public Library to, uh, Elvis Garcia, um, who was actually a veteran who had helped to create, uh, the Resource Center in the Tulare Library, um, but, uh, had died, uh, not, not in service, but, uh, following his return here to Tulare County, but he did have a tremendous impact on a lot of veterans and, um, that center in Tulare, uh, has actually served over three hundred veterans and their families, uh, in connecting them with resources upon their return, um, in the one year that it has been in existence, that was a pretty cool thing. Also, uh, this Saturday, uh, Food Link is having a preview event, uh, for their new warehouse, um, in Exeter, uh, that, that's taking place at five PM, uh, this Saturday, I look forward to checking that out. Um, also have a meeting scheduled, uh, this week to, uh, meet with, uh, an engineer who serves on a contract basis several, uh, public utilities districts and community services districts within our county, um, that, uh, really lack infrastructure, uh, capabilities, uh, in order to add new residential connections or new commercial connections, and we're, I'm going to meet with him, um, along with our economic development team, and we're going to be discussing, uh, what the county can do to help assist these unincorporated community services districts to expand their infrastructure to accommodate additional connections so that they can, uh, better serve their communities and, and help the communities move forward, so, look forward to seeing where that discussion goes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Supervisor Cox?
Uh, a few things here, uh, by way of report to all the board members, our Summer Night Lights program is, uh, well underway through the planning, we have a hundred and five events planned this summer in fifteen different locations countywide, that's north, south, east and west, so, uh, really been embraced by the communities and Allison is busy, uh, helping all of those folks coordinate, and we do have included in that hundred and five nights are probably about twenty swim nights, which, uh, are great for a lot of these young people who live in communities where there are no swimming pools at all. Uh, this evening, there's a change, uh, city of I say a chamber mixer, it'll be at Quiadelta Hospital's new, uh, wing just to the west of the hospital, uh, that's from five, again, five-thirty to seven o'clock, tomorrow I have retirement board meeting in the morning, Thursday first five commission meeting in the morning, and, uh, I, eleven years ago, Mr. Chair, when we received phone calls and someone wanted to talk to us about our RMA building inspectors, we cringed and, uh, I met with a, uh, a couple of people actually working on the food leak project, and they praised our resource management agency up one side and down the other, thanking us for the promptness in which we've got their plans out, getting their inspections done, they're up some, up against some pretty tight timelines to, uh, to get this project done, you know, moving into this facility, and so they, uh, specifically mentioned Dennis Layman, the, the help that he'd given him there, and, um, all of the inspectors, he said they were able to go down, work across the counter and get things, uh, done for that, that project, which is in the city of Exeter, but, uh, our resource management agency handles all their building, so, uh, great news there, I was very happy and I've not received a bad phone call in years, Mr. Spato was grinning over there, it's actually been years since I've received one of those phone calls, but it was great to have, uh, some, someone talk so nicely about, uh, our agency, and then I do have one question, Mr. Chair, who's watching the fire trucks? I, I'm counting heads out there, I don't know if we have anybody in a single truck out there in the county.
We'll ask Charlie when he gets up.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Worley.
Thank you, Chairman, it's been a very, very busy last couple of weeks, um, on the eighth, I was in Sacramento for a tree mortality task force at the state level representing our county, and then as a follow-up, uh, we had a tree mortality task force meeting here locally last Friday, uh, the, the Cal Fire, uh, head of the task force agency was down with his, with many of his staff members, talking to our people about the creation of our own, um, mini task force, if you will, and what we need to do to be able to plan and seek funding from the state of the, under the state of emergency for dealing with mortality, especially as it affects our public resources in the mountains, uh, primarily our road system. Uh, that's, that's a, a major problem, it's going to be, it's going to be continuing, if you've not been to the forest in a, in a time, you, you should go up there to see it because it is catastrophic and it's unprecedented, and it will give you a entirely new perspective on, on the need for forest management. I was at the, in Sacramento on Thursday for the CSAC Board of Directors meetings representing the county, uh, a lot of discussion about state budget, about transportation funding, of course, we have a major problem with funding for our regional projects because there is essentially, uh, a few dollars left in the till for this year, and at this point, there's nothing going forward, and so, continued expansion on the ninety-nine, we're look, hoping to look at the federal government as perhaps a way of seeking additional funding, um, but without some, uh, change in Sacramento in the formula about how monies are applied for regional projects and, and enhancement projects, there virtually is no money in the, in the, in the, in the till, uh, going forward, none to be expected. Just to comment about, you know, all the board members were at the, uh, funerals for, um, our pilot, uh, Mr. Chavez in, in Hampford, and then yesterday, um, for our, our deputy, and, you know, it, it just makes you stop and think about life, and recognizing that one moment you're driving along and you're kind of planning for tomorrow and for retirement and for whatever things you're thinking about, and the next moment, it's over, and so I've adopted a new philosophy, I'm going to plan to live to, be a hundred and live for today, uh, because you really don't know about tomorrow, and so I really appreciate the staff and the, the law enforcement officers who, um, came, of course, they came throughout California for yesterday's ceremony, um, showing that, that, uh, support for the families, um, but it certainly is a very tragic time for them, and we, we, our prayers and thoughts are with their families at this time, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Sheeta.
Since our last meeting, I've spent a lot of time on freight, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I was in Oakland on the freight, California Freight Advisory Committee, which I sit on, it was a two-year committee, that, we're now, I'm now serving my fourth year on this same committee, and what's happening is, two years ago, we wrote a plan to move freight throughout the state of California, and we had the legislature approve it, and it was approved in Washington DC, and now we're fine-tuning that plan, so we have another subcommittee called California State Rail Plan Advisory Committee, which I sit on, and it's looking specifically at rail, uh, it's also, after all the years that this board had lobbied for short haul rail, it is part of the program, they recognize short haul rail is going to be an important part of moving goods in the state of California besides the class one railroads. Then there's another group out there called the Freight Sustainable Freight Advisory Committee, which is made up for the first time, we have air resource board members sitting in that committee, which is probably trying to integrate and, and prioritize freight movement as it has an effect on air quality, so, it gives us another source of revenue for us to help move freight more efficiently. And tomorrow, uh, no, not tomorrow, but this Thursday, Strathmore Ag Boosters is going to have a drive-through dinner supporting the ag program at, at Strathmore High School, and the dinner starts at four o'clock in the Strathmore parking lot, that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, last week, uh, I had an opportunity to host the Leadership Porterville class, uh, they came over and I tried to give them a taste of the county, uh, I want to thank Ted Smalley, he came in and talked on, uh, measure R in roads and especially on the Highway one ninety corridor, which is very vital to the city of Porterville, and I think that the folks got a lot of good out of that, also had Eric Coyne come in and, and talk on the film industry and the Film Commission, which he's done a great job with, and told them about all the many films and, and commercials that we've done in the area and how it's benefited our restaurants and our, our motels, hotels, so, that was a, that was a very good one, and then Mike Washam came in and spoke on, uh, on our economic development, showed them how we're going in and not only encouraging businesses to come here, but restructuring our small communities and changing the zoning, so when somebody wants to come, they're ready to go, they can come in and, and they're, they're ready to go to, to their project. And then, of course, Sheriff Mike Boudreau came over and brought us up to speed on, on the sheriff and, and what they're doing, and the new technologies and where he sees us going in the next five to ten years, great job, Mike, thank you. So, that was good, and this morning, I've got some of those members that are over here visiting our, uh, uh, board meeting this morning to see how they run, if I could have them just stand up so that the folks can see you out here, thank you for coming over and being a part of our meeting this morning. Uh, this Friday, Supervisor Sheeta and I will be meeting with the city of Porterville and the state officials on the state hospital, they're wanting to phase out all the mentally retarded kids that are out there and completely do away with that, uh, that system that we've got, so, we'll be speaking with them and hopefully, we're going to have someone from Health and Human Services who will also be there, city of Porterville officials, the mayor, city manager from Porterville, we'll all be meeting, uh, Friday, ten o'clock at City Hall to discuss those and ask a few questions and try to figure out, uh, which way they're headed with this, uh, new plan that they've got for our state facility out there. Uh, bringing up the speed on Success Lake, it's got seventeen thousand four hundred and forty-six acre feet in it, which is, uh, almost double what we had last year, and we topped two years ago at thirteen, so, we're doing good, it's, it's picking up, you know, six to eight hundred acre feet a day, and the snowpack seems to be holding pretty good, so, hopefully, uh, we're going to have a pretty good supply of water this year in the dam, so, let's hope we keep getting storms in here and, and keep moving that forward. Last night, I had an opportunity to go by and, and, uh, give the little flag football team, the, uh, uh, Porterville Flag Football Bulldogs, uh, their little certificates, they were state champions, now can you imagine a flag football team being state champions? Uh, and as I was getting through with my presentation, the sheriff came by and he was, he was giving them some, uh, some different things, but, uh, we all went together and gave them a, a little bit of money and they bought the kids jackets, uh, they bought them bags, they even bought them little, like, Super Bowl rings, so the kids could wear their little ring, you know, and say, hey, I was state champion, I said, I said, I just hope this carries on, I just hope you kids keep getting better and better and we get a Valley Championship high school team in Porterville, we've been close and we should've, but, uh...
Is that flag football?
No, no. Dinuba never did that. Dinuba was our nemesis, but, anyway, uh, looking forward to that, and, uh... Tomorrow I will be, uh, having a Workforce Investment Board meeting, and, uh, that pretty well, that pretty well sums up what I got to say, and I think it's time that, uh, we move now to swearing in our new fire chief, Charlie Norman, you'll come forward. You're appreciating being here, okay, if you'd measure your right hand, Charlie, repeat after me, I Charlie Norman.
I Charlie Norman.
Do solemnly swear or affirm, do solemnly swear or affirm, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge, the duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties on which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, thank you.
I can't see the three-minute timer from this spot, man.
Right in front of you.
Thank you so much for this opportunity, uh, thank you for my support, uh, all my brothers and sisters in the fire service and law enforcement, I truly appreciate it, I couldn't do it without all of you. I'd like to keep these things brief, um, I'd like to thank all of my fellow firefighters, regardless of rank, you've been there with me as friends, colleagues and mentors throughout my career, you've kept me safe and you teach me at every opportunity, you've always inspired me to assist in making our department better, make our profession better, make our community safer, and training the next generation of firefighters. I'm blessed to be in this position, I'm honored to be in this position, and worked for such outstanding organizations throughout my career, and an outstanding organization with Tulare County Fire Department, and now I ask all of you to follow me so we can take this in a great direction. I'd like to all, so thank all the friendships that I've had throughout my childhood friends, um, and throughout my appointed and elected friendships with all the various boards and commissions I've had the opportunity to serve on, um, you've taught me, uh, a degree of selflessness, doing things for the bigger order, doing things for the bigger picture, and I thank you. There's many influences in my life, and again, I'll keep this at three minutes. There've been many influences in my life that kind of pushed me down this path, um, I was born and raised, never left Tulare County, uh, but all my family's from Kern County, um, as a child, my great uncle was current, long-tenured Kern County Fire Chief, his neighbor, Phil Pfeifer, was a long-tenured Bakerfield City Fire Chief, my dad was a teacher, but he was always involved with the community, uh, Woodley, Woodlake Fire Department as a volunteer firefighter. Probably the biggest influence in my life was my father. When you're going through those goofy teenager phases, I was an eighth grader and I had to write a civics paper, my dad was always involved with the planning commission, city council, Lions Club, Teachers Association, I remember one night, I had to do a paper, so he drug me, you know, and think of yourself in eighth grade, and just what conformist we were at that time, good times, right? Uh, he drug me to this meeting downtown Woodlake, and he said, uh, I noticed we parked a block and a half away, I thought, good grief, what are we doing here? I said, you know, it's right over there, Dad, he said, hang on, he goes, there's probably somebody in there that needs a spot more than we do, and likewise, I grumble and groaned and we make it to this meeting, and I see a couple of elderly people, infirmed, a couple of people with walkers, and, and okay, I get it, we get done with this meeting, we take our another half-mile walk back to the car, and he says, always remember, he goes, service before self, he said, maybe a little contribution, maybe a big contribution, but all of this is bigger than you, and, and I really took that to heart, although I didn't as an eighth grader, I sure do now. Um, growing up in a small town with many friends and family puts a different perspective on things, it, it's real, everybody knows you, good, bad or indifferent, they know your good points, they know your bad points, and, like I said, you know, spending a lot of time in Exeter, it's never neighborhood watch, it's always neighbor watch. They actually, they absolutely know what you're doing, so... Um, in closing, I'd like to thank my family, um, without these three individuals here, and I know they're cringing, they, they don't like things like this, uh, my youngest son, Jake, he's a senior at Exeter High School, he had a stats test this morning, he's not here, uh, my middle child, Kirby, she's a sophomore in college, um, my oldest and recent college graduate, Nate, and then my lovely bride of almost twenty-eight years, Madeline, um, without them, I couldn't do these things, and they are the backbone of my life. Thank you, Board, CAO, I appreciate this opportunity so much and for entrusting me with the future of the Tulare County Fire Department, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to have a photograph with our new chief with the entire board while he still has a little color in his hair.
Take a picture?
Yeah, just real quick, want to congratulate Chief Norman on his achievement in becoming Tulare County Fire Chief. You are the third chief in Tulare County's fire department history. So, that's pretty incredible, given that it's, you know, only ten years old. But, it's still a heck of an achievement, chief. And I know that you're going to do a great job leading the department into the future. There's a lot that's going on in the fire industry throughout our county. And I know that you are the right man to lead us into the future. So, congratulations. I look forward to working with you. And I hope you enjoy this new position.
Supervisor Cox?
You know, I've known Charlie for, what, fifteen or so years now. Nate taught my grandkids how to swim. Appreciate that. You know, there's a few people that you meet in your life that you know, that's someone I want to work with. And Charlie, you're one of those people. From the moment I met you, or Visalia Fire, you're one of the guys that I can work with him. This is a good guy. So, thank you for coming on over to the dark side, I guess, as some would call it. And no pressure, but now we're looking forward to having all those promises that have been made over the last ten years fulfilled in your tenure. So, looking forward to new fire station locations, new buildings, more new equipment, more and more and more. Excited to see you come on board.
He's going to look back at you and say, "Then you've got to fund them." I know it's chief, but to me, I always think of you as Charlie. And I didn't realize until today that you grew up in Woodlake. And now I understand why you're such a great guy. No, because I mean that. My experience in Woodlake has been, there's just tremendous people there and they're very community-minded. And you're right about small towns, you know, there's no point in putting on any airs in a small town because everybody knows every stupid thing you've ever done in your life. The other thing I want to say was, you know, when I first ran for the board, I had this vision for Tulare County about being a place of opportunity so that people wouldn't have to find their dreams someplace else. They wouldn't have to go to San Francisco, or Los Angeles, or Chicago, or New York. And I realized in some respects, there are things, we're never going to really probably have room for nuclear physicists in Tulare County, or jobs for them. But, in the field that you're in, Charlie, you know, when you look at law enforcement, fire protection, public service really is a great opportunity for people in Tulare County. Our children can grow up and they can become fire chiefs, or they can become sheriffs, they can become district attorneys. So, there is great opportunity in public service. And I'm so grateful that we have somebody in your position, Charlie. I think Supervisor Cox said it well. There are certain people in life that you meet, and the very first time you meet them, you think, "This is a quality person." I can't tell you why I know that. It's intuitive. But, you're one of those people. And I know that when the board interviewed people for the position, we had some great applicants. It was a unanimous decision for you to be our new chief. And I know you're going to do a great job. And Supervisor Cox has promised to fund all your projects. So, I know you're going to have a great tenure in Tulare County and congratulations to you.
Charlie, you're the first non-Cal Fire Chief we've had in Tulare County. And I believe that was one of the goals of the Board of Supervisors when we formed our own fire department, that we would give our residents the chance to have a career in Tulare County as Supervisor Worley brought up, without moving all over the state of California to support a fire career. The other thing a lot of people don't know that you probably mentioned is your involvement in the community of Exeter. You've given a lot of time, you've served on city council, you've served on the school board, you've been a very integral part of that community. And I want to thank you for all your service in and outside the fire service. And welcome, Board. And as Supervisor Worley mentioned, you were a unanimous choice by the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Charlie. You know, it's always great to be able to promote within. And of course, we always put out our FPs, but it's also very good to see somebody well-qualified that has come up through our organization and now is the fire chief. Just like Sheriff Boudreau came up through the Sheriff's Department, and he's a small-town guy. He, you know, California hot springs. So, let's face it, these small-town guys, you know, I'm not saying that I'm anything, but I'm from Terabella. Who would have thought? Who would have thought this old Terabella boy would ever be on the Board of Supervisors? So, Charlie, thank you so much. Appreciate you and looking forward to working with you and all your group in the back there. You've got a great staff, you've got a great group of employees, and we're proud of all of you. So, thank you. Firefighters Association Muscular Dystrophy Fill the Boot. I think Charlie, you're going to introduce this person?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll be brief, really, this time.
Okay.
So many years, MDA does so much with our firefighters association to make money for the muscular dystrophy association. So, when you see these people out on the corner with their fire boots, you know, don't accelerate. Pull over and stop. I'd like to introduce Kerry Danny, the executive director of MDA. And I'll be brief and I'll let her go through her presentation. Thank you, Kerry.
Thank you, Charlie.
Give me just one moment to pull the presentation up. There we go. Okay, all right. Okay, so I just wanted to come today and talk about the success that we've had through the partnership of IAFF and MDA. So, just a little bit of history about that and about what our association does. So, Fill the Boot with the firefighters supporting MDA actually started in 1954. So, there's a very long history of support and great partnership there. So, just very briefly, because I know I was not an expert on muscular dystrophy before I started working for MDA. So, just to kind of fill you in, what is muscular dystrophy? It's progressive muscle weakness. There's actually forty-three different diseases that we cover, and it affects all the muscle groups. So, you might think of it as affecting your arms and legs, but it also affects the face. So, it can affect your ability to speak, your ability to swallow. It also affects the heart and the lungs, as well those all being muscles. So, not only do our patients need wheelchairs and hospital beds, but a lot of times they need a feeding tube because they cannot swallow. They cannot speak, so they need a communication device. They cannot breathe on their own, so they need a ventilator machine. There's a lot of equipment and medical treatment that they need. The average life expectancy of someone with muscular dystrophy is just twenty-five years. Of course, that really is an average. Sometimes the diagnosis is given right at birth and the lifespan is very short. Sometimes, the disease does not happen until adulthood. I'm sure many of us have heard of Lou Gehrig or ALS disease. That disease does not happen until you are already an adult, but then the progression is very rapid. So, that's kind of the urgency behind what we're dealing with and who we're helping. So, what is MDA? What do we do for those patients? And this is just kind of a run-through of the different services that we provide. And I won't go too in-depth into all of them, but we are the world leader in muscle disease research. We provide monthly support groups. We have medical clinics with specialists at Valley Children's Hospital and Fresno Community Hospital. We pay for repairs to all of that equipment I mentioned, hospital bed, wheelchair, ventilator machine. And my personal favorite, we have a summer camp for local children that have disabilities. And the camp is really special and unique because the entire facility is wheelchair-accessible. So, there are hiking trails that are paved so you can go hiking in your wheelchair. The swimming pool has a ramp that goes down into the pool, so you can go into the swimming pool in your wheelchair. We do wheelchair races and wheelchair soccer and fishing, swimming, karaoke. It's an incredible time for these kids. A lot of situations, they are the only child at their school or in their home that is in a wheelchair, or leg braces, or on a ventilator machine. So, when they come to this camp for one week, they fit in and they make friends and they can just really enjoy childhood and get to do things they've really never done before. I could talk all day just about the summer camp. I absolutely love it. I have worked at MDA for nine years now and I get to go to the camp every year. But, I know you guys have a lot of items on your agenda today, so I will move on. But, the camp and really all of our services are really meaningful and impactful for our families. And thanks to the fundraisers that we do, we are able to provide the medical equipment, the camp, all of our services, at no cost to the families. So, just to really look at that partnership between firefighters and MDA, again, they've been supporting MDA for over sixty years now. So, when MDA was first funded, founded in 1950, the average life expectancy for someone with Duchenne muscular dystrophy was just twelve years. But today, their average is twenty-five years. And even though I think twenty-five years is very young, that particular form of muscular dystrophy is one that only happens to boys. And so, I always think if that was my brother, or that was my son, I would be incredibly grateful to have him in my life for twice as long. And that's what MDA has done through our clinics, through our research, through our treatments, and especially with the funding of the firefighters because they are our biggest sponsor nationwide. And there's just been a lot of other things, again, the slide kind of shows, from in 1950, nothing was known about muscular dystrophy. Through all the funding that we've raised with Fill the Boot, we've been able to fund research, discover the genes, the genetic mutations, the causes of the disorders. Now, we're actually developing medications for those diseases. And then, of course, the camp, as well, it started in the sixties as an experiment. It was wildly successful. The kids loved it. And it's not just fun, it's really a place where they build their confidence and their self-esteem. So, now we have about four thousand kids across the country every year that go to the camp. And then we wanted to take kind of a smaller focus and look just at MDA's impact here in Tulare County. So, currently, we have a hundred and seventy-two patients here in Tulare County. And last year, we had eleven children from Tulare County go to our camp. Again, my office is the Central California chapter, so I cover everything from Kern County up to Sonora. So, we had a lot more kids overall go to the camp. But, again, I wanted to kind of give you guys your local focus. These are all pictures of local kids at the camp. You can see the wheelchair races, you can see baseball, you can see the firefighters doing our whipped cream challenge. And I put the names, I couldn't put the names, obviously, of a hundred and seventy-two patients, but I did put the names of all of the campers because I, again, I've known them for nine years. They're very real to me. So, I did put their names because they're not just kids, they're not just sick kids. They're kids that are really depending on us and kids that look forward to this camp every year. They actually do say that the camp is better than Christmas. That's how much it means to them. So, the camp is just a really special place. And then we really wanted to look at the stats because I know that Tulare County firefighters are extremely proud of us, and I am as well. So, this is the ranking of the top ten Fill the Boots from 2015. And so, if you look, it's no surprise, Cal Fire, since it covers the whole state, is right at the top, making over four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, which is incredible. But, we are extremely proud that this year, or last year, Tulare County firefighters ranked number ten in the state of California, raising thirty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And I had really been trying to get the Tulare County Fill the Boot going for a while and because we go out to really remote outlying areas. We do, we're doing this in Early Mart and Goshen and Ivanhoe. And, you know, the belief a few years ago was that maybe there wasn't a lot of money out there, or there wasn't enough traffic out there. But, I know it was mentioned earlier today, Tulare County is very generous, very giving, very caring. I live in Fresno now because that's where the MDA office is, but I was born and raised here in Visalia. And so, I knew that the community was very giving and I knew that the firefighters would volunteer and stay out there all day. So, we finally got it off the ground and it's just been hugely successful. And then this is a look, again, just a more local focus, to look at the top ten ranking for Fill the Boots last year just here in Central Valley. And you will see that Tulare County firefighters ranked number one here in Central California. But, I do want to highlight because I know there are several other MDA sponsors in the room today. I know I saw some of my Visalia firefighters, they ranked number ten, raising over ten thousand dollars. And there's actually a lot of supporters. I spoke earlier with CHP, the CHP and the Tulare County sheriffs help out at our lockup events. So, there's a lot of MDA volunteers and supporters here in this room that I also wanted to acknowledge. But, again, we're just really proud that the Tulare County firefighters did so incredibly well this year and raised a tremendous amount of money for the MDA families that are depending on us. And then, in conclusion, I really just wanted to say thank you to not only the firefighters for volunteering, for being out there, but especially to the community, to all of the residents that donate their dollars and their change as they drive through. It obviously takes a lot of people donating a couple of dollars at a time to raise thirty-four thousand dollars. And as I mentioned, that was just for the county, but also we had Woodlake Fire went out, Visalia Fire went out, Tulare City Fire went out, you know, several other departments locally went out and supported MDA as well. So, I just want to say a huge thank you to the Tulare County firefighters for their support to the residents here in Tulare County. And I definitely want to acknowledge Hank, the union president, for just being a really strong supporter to really push this to his membership. And also Eric Withrow is the Fill the Boot coordinator. And Eric's really the one that organizes it and puts it all together and plans it all out. They had, I believe, twelve locations throughout the county. So, it's a lot of effort on their part and they're just, they've been amazing to work with. And all of the firefighters, I visit all of the intersections while they're out there and they're just happy to do it, happy to help. And so, I cannot say thank you enough.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. My name's Hank Segwin. I'm the president of Tulare County Professional Firefighters Association. And I would just like to thank you for allowing us to come before you and present these stats that Kerry, Kerry's hard to say no to. She called me, I think it's three years ago, and her opening statement says, "Do you realize you are the only county that does not do Fill the Boot?" I said, "Okay, so what do we got to do?" So, that's where our relationship started and we moved forward from that. And we're very proud of that, of what we've done. And I also would like to thank Eric Withrow for his leadership in chairing our fundraiser. And we vow to move up another notch. We need to make that ten go to like one and hold that one in our Central Valley. And the other thing is, we're very honored to witness Chief Norman pinning on the badge. We look forward to his leadership. And as by looking at the room, he will do a good job. And his model is just do the right thing and move forward. So, once again, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Kerry, for coming and putting some facts and figures on this. We see these guys working out in the streets with their boots and stuff, collecting money. So, it's good to see the facts and figures that go along with it. Thank you, guys. Thank you all for what you do every day. Thank you. Yeah, if you guys want to go ahead and if you're going to file out, go ahead. We'll just kind of take a little... Appreciate you all being here, though. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, while they're leaving, I was struck by the fact that Tulare County was only a couple thousand dollars less than Marin County, which, of course, we have the... We're one of the poorest counties in the state of California, we're one of the richest counties in California. And so, it just does demonstrate the generosity of our people and it's encouraging.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. We're going to move on to item number four. And we have Nelsa Gonzalez and Serena Garanza?
Sonia.
Sonia Garanza, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
They're going to be talking about our food safety awards.
Yes. Yes. Good morning, Chairman Ennis, Board, CAO Spotta County Council. Thank you for having us here today. So, today, we're here to talk about the Excellence in Food Safety Award Program that we have through the Tulare County Environmental Health Service Department. So, just to give you a little bit of history about the program, the program was started in March of 2010. In 2012, we awarded a hundred and twenty-six certificates. In two thousand and twelve, we awarded a hundred and twenty-six certificates. In two thousand and thirteen, we awarded two-eleven. In twenty-four, we had, twenty-fourteen, we had a significant increase to three ninety-seven. And in two thousand and fifteen, we had three hundred and one certificates. So that's three hundred and one food facilities that earned that award. That's almost one quarter of all eligible food facilities that are going to be recognized with the award for two thousand and fifteen. Facilities recognized or awarded a certificate to hang in their restaurant. Award winners have been proven their commitment to providing safe food to their customers. This is what our certificate looks like for two thousand and fifteen, and it was actually designed by our community outreach team. So, it's a beautiful award, so keep a lookout when you're dining out. So what is the required criteria to earn this award? First of all, you must be a permanent food facility, you must be a food facility that conducts food preparation, you must be in good standing with the Environmental Health Department, and lastly, you must achieve a ninety-five percent or above on three consecutive routine inspections from the department. So some of our goals for the program, we want to focus the efforts of food operators on food safety, we want to lower the incidence of possible foodborne illness outbreaks, and of course, we want to recognize and reward the food facilities that are doing an excellent job in our communities. So like I said, we have three hundred and one food facilities, this is gonna take a little bit of time, but I feel, you know, they've earned this award, so we want to take a moment. At the end of reading all of the three hundred and one names, I'll then ask to have anyone who is here in the audience representing their restaurant to please stand to be recognized. So we'll do that at the end.
Good morning to you all. We will start with city of Dinuba with eleven food facilities. Burger King, Dinuba Lanes, IHOP, Jack in the Box, KFC, Long John Silver's, Panda Express, Perkos, Porta Subs, Rite Aid, Starbucks, Washington Intern...
For the cities of Goshen, Ivanhoe, Kingsburg, Arosi, Sultana, and Traver, have ten food facilities awarded. Goshen Elementary School, Ivanhoe Elementary School, The Ivanhoe Medical Supply Store, Kings River Elementary School, East Arosi Market, Bolden Valley School, Little Caesar's, Arosi High School, Munson-Sultana School, and Traver School.
For city of Woodlake, we have six food facilities awarded. Castle Rock School, General Food Store, Sequoia Union School, Subway, Woodlake Central Kitchen, and Woodlake High School.
City of Visalia, a hundred and eleven food facilities. A&amp;W Drive-In, Charcuterie, Denny's Restaurant, Elbow Creek School, Fairview School, Food Maxx, Golden West High School, Houston School, Jack in the Box, Jimmy John's, KFC on Noble, and Las Palmas Restaurant.
Woo-hoo!
Continue with city of Visalia. Los Arbolitos on North Kane, Mineral King School, Panda Express on North Dinuba Boulevard, Picnic Sandwich Shop, Pizzano's, Pizza Hut on South Acres, Porta Subs, Primos Espresso, Redwood High School, Save Mart on East Noble, Save Mart on West Goshen, Sonic Drive-In on North Ben Matics, Starbucks on West Goshen, Taco Bell on East Noble, and Taco Bell on North Dinuba Boulevard, and Target Store on North Dinuba Boulevard.
Tazaria, Vintage Press, The Visalia Sales Yard Walk-Up, number one and number two, The Visalia Tea Garden, Visalia Unified Food Center, Wendy's, Adventure Park, Applebee's on Mooney, Aramark Cigna, RB's, Auntie Anne's Pretzel in the Visalia Mall, B&amp;L Quality Meats, Baja Fresh Mexican Grill, and Best Burger Drive-In.
Beverages and More, Burger King on South Mooney, Carl's Jr. on South Chinewith, The Potla Mexican Grill, Chuck E. Cheese, Cold Stone Creamery, Comfort Inn and Suites, Dairy Visalia, in the Visalia Mall, Denny's Restaurant on South Mooney, Domino's Pizza on West Tulare, El Diamante High School.
Four Creeks Cafe, Good Times Cafe, The Hampton Inn, In-N-Out Burger, Jack in the Box, Jamba Juice, Jimmy John's, Huiya Delta Rehab Center, Kentucky Fried Chicken, La Hoya Middle School, and La Quinta Inn.
Little Caesar's Pizza, Long John Silver's, McDonald's on West Walnut, Neoneds on South Mountain Mike's Pizza, Mount Whitney High School, Naturally Nuts, Olive Garden, Panda Express on South Mooney, Panera Bread, and Papa Murphy's.
Pizza Hut, Plaza Park Softball, Porta Subs, Prince Food and Gas, Quick Jack's, Red Lobster, Red Robin, Rollertown of Visalia, Sakuru Japan, Save Mart on West Noble, and Save Mart on West Walnut.
Zizzler's Restaurant, Sonic Drive-In, Starbucks on South Mooney, Starbucks on West Noble Avenue, Starbucks on West Caldwell, Starbucks on the forty-one nineteen South Mooney, Starbucks on fifty-one oh-one West Walnut, Strings Italian Cafe, Subway located at South Mooney, and Subway West Cypress.
Subway on South Mooney Boulevard, The Super Eight Motel, Taco Bell on South Mooney, Taco Bell on the other part of South Mooney, so two locations, Target Store, The Frosted Muffin, Tiki Snow, Tutti Frutti Yogurt, Viva Blunt School, Villa Italian Kitchen, Visalia Pizza Factory, Walnut Park, and Yogurtland.
With city of Tulare, we have thirty-five awarded food facilities. Amigos in Tulare, Auntie Anne's, Carl's Jr., Charter Inn and Suites, Phil's and Grill Bar Restaurant, Del Taco Food Company, IHOP, Jamba Juice, and La Quinta Inn.
McDonald's inside of the Walmart on Prosperity, Oak Valley School, Panda Express, Papa Murphy's Pizza, Pizza Hut, Popeye's Chicken, Quality Inn, Rocky Mountain Chocolate Factory, Sonic Drive-In, Sundale Union School, Taco Bell on Hillman, and Tugos Baskin Robbins Combo.
Big Kahuna's Yogurt, Buena Vista School, Burger King located on East Bard'sley, Chevron Gas and Goodies, Domino's Pizza, Chin Oak High School, Palo Verde School, Preet Market, Taco Bell located on Tulare Avenue, Tulare Adult School, Tulare School Central Kitchen, Tulare Union High School, and Tulare Western High School.
The cities of Allensworth, Early Mart, Pixley, Tipton, and Woodville, six food facilities. Allensworth School, Early Mart Elementary School, Pixley Elementary School, Pixley Middle School, Tipton Elementary School, and our Woodville School.
City of Exeter, eleven food facilities. Boys and Girls Club of Visicoys, Burger King, El Nuevo Mexicali, Exeter Central Kitchen, Exeter Golf Course, Hometown Emporium, Kirkman's VIP Pizza, Rite Aid, Save Mart, Taco Bell, and TCB Wine.
Cities of Farmersville and Lindsay, twelve food facilities. Farmersville High School, Freedom Elementary, Hester School, Rainbow Drive-In, Snowden School, Taqueria Anna Marias, El Regalo Discount Store, Lindsay Donuts, Lindsay High School, Lindsay Unified Central Kitchen, Save Mart, and Taco Bell.
City of Three Rivers, seven food facilities. Comfort Inn and Suites, Eightway Restaurant Factory, Santa Teresita Youth Center, Vera Subs and Salads, St. Anthony's Retreat, River School.
Cities of Springville, Strathmore, Poplar, and Plainview. With a total of eleven food facilities, we have Cow Punchers Cafe and Catering, The Hamburger Stand, Psychon, Easy Shop and Go, Harmony Charter Academy, Strathmore Elementary, Strathmore Middle, Sunnyside School, The Orange Works, Family Market, and Pleasant View Elementary.
City of Porterville, we have seventy-eight food facilities that were awarded. All About Ice Cream, Bartlett Middle School, Bellevue School, Burger King, Burton Elementary School, Burton Middle School, Country Cafe, D Street Chevron, Denny's on West Henderson, Domino's Pizza on West Henderson, and Don Vino's Italian Kitchen.
Food for Less, Galaxy Nine, Granite Hills High School, Gray's Chili Dogs, Henderson Chevron Food Mart, Jim Maples Academy, JJ's Food Mart, Juicy Burger, L&amp;D Chinese Buffet, Los Robles High, Los Robles Elementary School, and McDonald's.
Moms Ube Pizza, Minachi High School, Montevista Elementary School, Papa Lolo's, Pizza Guys, Pizza Hut on West Henderson, Poor Richard's Pizza, Roach Avenue School, Rockford School, Save Mart on West Henderson, and Sequoia Middle.
Sherwood Handy Market, Sierra View District Hospital, Spoons Frozen Yogurt, Stafford's favorite, famous chocolates, Starbucks, Subway on Henderson, Subway on Main Street, Summit Charter Academy, Summit Charter Academy Lombardi, Sweet Nalali's Bakery, and Taco Bell on Henderson.
Target, I Kitchen, Tomatoes Fast Food, Wendy's on Henderson, West Putnam School, Westfield School, Alta Vista School, Big Kahuna's Yogurt, Burger King on South J Street, Burton Pathways Charter Academy, Carl's Jr., Denny's.
Doyle Elementary School, Helping Hands of Porterville, Jenny Lynn's, KFC, Long John Silver's, Owassis Tropical, Olive Street School, Panda Express, Papa Murphy's Take and Bake, Pioneer Middle School, Pizza Hut on West Olive.
Porterville College, Santa Fe Elementary School, Here a Minute Mark, Starbucks on South Main, Starbucks on West Olive, Subway Restaurant on East Olive and Subway on West Vandelia, Summit Charter Academy, Taco Bell on West Olive, The Blue Huron Cafe, and Vandelia
Cities of Rich Grove, Terabella, and Ducor, we have three food facilities there. Taqueria Gudino, Julie's Mexican Restaurant. Ducor Elementary School. We made it, guys, so I just want to congratulate three hundred and one food facilities, they're doing an excellent job, and I'd like to ask the audience if there's anybody here from these restaurants to please stand and be recognized.
You know, this is a lot of hard work for these folks. To get three consecutive inspections is about a year's worth of time, and so they really are going above and beyond with food safety and cleanliness and sanitation in order to earn these awards, so we're really proud to give them out.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just to make a comment, I know it takes a lot to read off three hundred and eleven or three hundred and one names, but I have to tell you, I'm so glad that we do this each year. Like you said, I think it's a tremendous achievement on the part of these restaurants, and they really have to work hard to protect the health of their consumers, their patrons. And I think it's just great that we're doing this, I was, you know, glad to be a part of several of the inspections that helped us to start this program. And, you know, I know that I paid attention to that list of establishments and looked at places that I frequently attend, maybe places that I don't attend that probably should, because I can go home and not have my stomach hurt. You know, it's really great that we have so many in Tulare County that are doing so well, and I commend all of the establishments that are here today. Kudos to you for the job you're doing, and I hope you take this recognition seriously and hang your ribbon proudly in your restaurant. I think that's a great system that we have in place. I enjoy seeing the yellow ribbon when I go to different restaurants, and I know that they have earned that, so it's really a great program, and I hope we keep it going, and I hope that we get to a point where we have twelve hundred names that you have to read off.
I agree.
And maybe we'll need more people to do that, and...
And water.
Good job, thank you.
Ms. Cox? I yoo-hooed for Las Palmas and Visalia. You know, I've been going to that restaurant, actually bugging the owners of that restaurant since I was about eight years old, and it really does take a lot of commitment. I know them, I know what kind of commitment they take, so knowing that that's spreading over to the three hundred and one restaurants, there's a lot of hard work going on. Most people don't realize, you know, if you see a bug in a restaurant, a bug didn't originate there, it probably came in with an order of food or something. It takes a lot of work to combat that and keep that stuff out of the side of your restaurant. So, thanks to my extended family there for being on the list again, and congratulations to all of the restaurants, you did a great job, it does a lot of work.
I didn't realize there were seventy-eight restaurants, whatever it is, in Porterville. And the other thing I noticed is that Porterville and Tulare are the same size, and there's twice as many restaurants in the Porterville list as are on the Tulare side, so I guess if you want to be safe, go to Porterville. No, but I do want to congratulate those, and I know Las Palmas have been here year in and year out, and they probably have some kind of a record, I think, in terms of the longevity of continuously receiving these awards and certificates.
Yeah, they do great.
But, congratulations to all the beneficiaries, we're the beneficiaries, congratulations to all the awardees, and thank you for taking the time to show up here this morning, we appreciate that very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I concur with my fellow supervisors, this is an important award. It's proudly display the certificate in the window, because we've done a lot in food safety, but I remember several years ago, Porterville's list was about that long. And they've made a significant improvement in the last couple of years. But I take notice, and I read through all these award winners, and it has bearing on where I eat. So, thank you very much for all your hard work, and we'll continue this program and hopefully expand it again back to three hundred and ninety restaurants.
I also want to thank you very much, I know, early on, Porterville, the Porterville area had hardly any on this list. Of course, I looked over at Supervisor Sheeta, some of the places we've been eating here lately aren't on the list. It kind of makes me feel a little bit... But, really, congratulations to everybody, and they need to display that in a place in that restaurant where the people can see it. Needs to be right out front, maybe where you pay your bill, wherever, but they need to display that, so people know that you are a safe place to go, and they know they're not gonna get food poisoning or something else down the road. It was great to see my old hometown, Terabella, Terabella on there, that was great, yeah. Julie's Mexican Restaurant, so congratulations to you, yeah. So thank you all, and keep up the good hard work, and let's keep the residents of Tulare County safe when they come in and use your establishment, so thank you so much. Okay, let's move on to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak to the board on issues that are not on our agenda, but is board supervisor's business, may come forward at this time?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Board, Scott Harris with the California Highway Patrol. Just want to take a couple minutes of your time, I wanted to introduce the incoming new Public Informations Officer. As of March first, I will be returning to Road Patrol, so I thought it would be nice to show you the new friendly face of the Highway Patrol. He's been here for a few years, you've probably never seen him before, because he's been on graveyard most of that time. He actually came to us with a really nice tan, but since then, it's gone. So Steve Beal will be taking over for me, starting March first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the Board. I am not homegrown, I grew up in Southern California, however, I have called Tulare County my home for the last fourteen years. My wife was born and raised in Dinuba, and we have four kids, we live in Visalia now. Working with the county is a big deal to me, we've had a lot of discussion earlier... We've had a lot of discussion earlier, and presentations made for people that have done work for the county with this family establishment we have here, and a family feel. Everyone is very gracious of law enforcement. We've seen that, especially in the last, uh, few days with the, uh, the funerals for our fallen brethren. With that said, I look forward to the opportunity to working with Tulare County, with the board in specific, and thank you for this time.
Mr. Chairman, you leave a couple business cards?
Uh, Scott and Steve were at our, uh, spoke at our Rotary Club this morning at six-thirty, uh, bright and early, and, uh, so they'll probably go, need to take a nap.
I, I just wanted to say that I'm actually kind of glad to see Scott going back to patrol. I'll, I'll give you my, uh, li- license plate number and tell you what vehicle I drive, and maybe you can watch out for me out there, and, and that way I'll know someone when I get pulled over.
Pete, in your case, that might not be a very good idea.
That's what I was going to say. It's nice to associate with California Highway Patrol without having to give my autograph.
But i- i- it's great to, uh, great to meet you, and, and thank you for the job that you do as, uh, the Public Information Officer. That you being in our unincorporated communities and building relationships with those residents is really critical to the job that we do. I know I was in Pixley last night, and they were complaining about some school speeding issues, and, um, you guys are usually very quick to respond to those, and, um, thank you for what you do on behalf of the California Highway Patrol to keep our community safe and, and keep our kids safe, too. So, look forward to working with you, and, uh, welcome, uh, to your new position.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Welcome. Anyone else wishing to speak during public comment? Kelly?
Hi, Ted McCauley, Exeter, California. Um, I'm glad that Charlie stuck around. Um, on behalf of all of his friends in Exeter, we would just like to congratulate Charlie as our new Fire Chief. Um, I had the privilege of serving with Charlie on the Exeter City Council for many years, and he was a great mentor for me as I was, um, learning the ropes as a city council member. Um, and probably one of the things that he taught me that everyone appreciates so much in that is he told me to keep my comments brief. So, again, I'd like to congratulate Charlie and all the Norman family. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ted.
My name is Icedro Rodriguez. I'm the superintendent principal at Ducor Elementary School. I'd like to, uh, first thank you for allowing me to come up here, and this is my first time up here, so please forgive my stutterness. Uh, a couple things. I'd like to, uh, thank, uh, Board Member Mr. Cox for the Summer Night Lights that was presented here to Ducor School. This is our second year with that. Um, I find that to be very exciting to invite our community's members coming out, and it's been really, uh, planned well, um, and the results have been really positive. So, I'm happy the community come out and have a little powwow. It's been exciting, um, and it's changed the community positively, so I'm really excited for that, and thank you for that as well. The, uh, health award for our kitchen, um, it's a very small kitchen, but we're very proud of what we do. Uh, I, of course, get to look over that and make sure it's done well, but it's my staff members that make it happen, not myself, so, uh, this award goes to them and the staff members for what they've done, so thank you for that as well. We've also worked with the, uh, board of supervisors as, as far as some upgrades with our community. I think we've been, uh, on the board or have been approved for some sidewalk improvements. I think for a stop sign as well, that's one of the big needs. We have a very, a walk, a rock quarry, I think, down the street from us, and we have a lot of heavy trucks that come to our schools, sometimes within speed limits and sometimes not within speed limits. And so, um, that is, uh, a big concern of mine, is, uh, you know, continuing to support with our community. Uh, Avenue fifty-six and our student safety is always important for me. Uh, in the future, we are having to, um, hopefully the bond approves here in the November bond, that we'll get some modernization money to get some improvements in our school site, new cafeteria expansion, classroom, also a, um, a wall, a, a wall that'll come front of, of front of our school that for our safety, but also a sidewalk, a pathway, and new parking stru- construction as well. So, you are invited to come by the office at any time and look at that plans, and hopefully our, uh, November bonds goes through, and we'll assist some improvements the next year or two. Um, let's see. Oh, uh, you know, one of the challenges is getting communities to come out and, uh, talk with you and see, uh, and let you know some of the concerns that are out there. I don't represent the community, but I know the concerns they're having out there, and one of the concerns is, uh, a lot of flooding was happening during this rain. You know, they don't have sidewalks. They just have a paved road and a lot of damaged road issues, so if the board can kind of look forward to any improvements on Ducor, um, that would be really, really good for the community out there as well. Um, again, you know, safety is a concern. Sidewalk accessibility to the school is very limited. It's, um, really, there's no sidewalk, it was a school, period. Uh, so hopefully this modernization money will help some of that in the future with the planning here. The supervisors look in Ducor School as well. Again, I'm here to represent Ducor School. I'm very, I've been there for, since two thousand nine. I'm very excited to be there. Um, I'm very excited to be part of Mr. Cox's plan with the Summer Night Lights and with his board, and I really like to have an opportunity to come out here more often, uh, considering that it's a forty-five minute drive from my work, uh, it takes some time to come out, but if it's a live broadcast, I have an opportunity to go online and, and observe you as well. So, um, other than that, thank you again, and have a great day.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during public comment?
Okay. Seeing none. Let's move on to the consent calendar. Uh, fifteen is off and will be brought back at a later date. Uh, anybody else having any...
Uh, M- Mr. Chair, I just, uh, wanted to make a comment. Um, we are, uh, taking up, uh, one of the items on the consent calendar, specifically item twenty-five, um, is, uh, related to our animal services remodel and expansion project. Uh, I have to say, I was out there, uh, a couple weeks ago or last week, uh, for, uh, Valentine's Day, we got my son a kitty. He was pretty excited. Um, and, uh, anyways, uh, I have to say, that facility looks beautiful. You guys are doing a fantastic job out there remodeling that and making it a, a very, uh, public-friendly, uh, facility, and, and I would like to, um, with so much going on in animal services, uh, and now creating an advisory committee, um, I would like to have a presentation from Animal Services at some point in the near future, uh, just talking about really everything that you're doing, so that we have a good idea, uh, from a board perspective as to how we've, you know, revolutionized animal control in Tulare County, because I really do think we have, so I just wanted to make that comment. Mr. Chair?
Okay. Thank you.
Real quick, I, uh, I just wanted to comment briefly, too, about how, uh, happy to see moving forward with our, uh, flood control project up in, uh, on the, the Sontag Ditch area, also the, uh, uh, going out on the, the, the construction for the library at London, move forward with that project, and so happy to see us making progress all along all fronts.
Okay. And with that, if there's no one from the public that would wish to, uh, consider any items separately, I would move for approval of the consent calendar, less item fifteen.
Moved by Supervisor Vanderpool, second by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. Vote is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, let's go on, let's move forward to, uh, item number six, zone change amendment, uh, PZ fifteen oh-two-oh, an amendment to Tulare County zoning ordinance, Williamson Act cancellation. Mr. Washam?
Good morning, Chairman. As I set this up, um, I'd just like to actually comment again on the, um, uh, the food safety standards, that those three hundred, um, restaurants and facilities represent thousands of jobs, and oftentimes, some of these, uh, companies are, provide the first jobs for our youth in, in the county, and it's a tremendous stepping stone and experience, so, so above and beyond the safety matters, these are, these are good, strong, young, um, and, and small businesses often, and even the name brand, uh, franchises are, are often owned by families. So, I think it's a fantastic thing. I always look forward to this, uh, day as well, the board. All right, um, good morning, and, and I will try to keep this brief. We're trying to be a little bit more efficient, so we're bringing two projects under one, um, presentation to be able to, uh, get them out quickly and, and efficiently. So, good morning, Board. CAO County Council, today we're considering a zone change and a Williamson Act cancellation for, um, the Embry Asset Group. It's located on the south side of, uh, State Route one ninety, just west of Road one ninety-two in Poplar. The ultimate proposal is for a nine thousand square foot dollar general store. Um, there's been a will serve letter secured for water and sewer, and, uh, what this project really represents for your consideration is a change of zone from AE twenty to C two, and a Williamson Act cancellation on a one point three-nine acre site. There's also a parcel map that has already been, um, conditionally approved for this, subject to approval by your board on these other matters. Project description, the Williamson Act cancellation is, uh, a cancela- a partial cancellation of, of Williamson Act, uh, Contract forty-one nineteen as amended. The project meets the five mandatory findings for cancellation pursuant to government code, and, uh, there's detail of that analysis in your, uh, attached, there's attachment five in your packet. Department of Conservation also concurs with these findings and, uh, for the cancellation and its conclusions in our analysis. Uh, the county auditor determined that the cancellation fee is forty-six thousand plus based on, um, the current fair market value of the budget.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question here?
Sure.
Um, well, I looked at that number, that surprised me. We're talking about AE twenty land at its current value being three hundred thousand dollars per acre, worth three hundred thousand per acre in Poplar Cotton Center. I don't believe that.
The, the county assessor is the one that places the value on it. It could very well be the, um, could very well be the, the, the negotiated cost of this site, uh, with the entitlements. The, the designation, it is AE zoned currently. The designation is for commercial use, so, so the land use designation is, um, is a higher standard than, than the simply the ag use.
I thought when you canceled the ad, the, the contract, you canceled it at the land's value today, not the full built-out proposed use. So, I'm just having heartburn with that, because I know that's an extortion check written to the state that no one in this room will ever see a nickel of.
Absolutely understood. Uh, it is a pass-through to the state, that you're correct, and the, and the value is placed by the assessor.
And the fact that they don't support the Williamson Act anymore, that money should stay here in Tulare County, but that's just for us to say. That's, common sense would tell you that.
I mean, I, I don't mean to hold up a project like this, but this is pure extortion.
Oh, not it.
You know, I agree with Supervisor Cox. I, I don't know many properties that are a little bit over an acre that are worth that kind of money, uh, in an unincorporated community, and I would suggest the assessor, or the, whoever put the value on this, reevaluate.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, for the, for the change of zone, uh, what the request is to change the zone from AE twenty, uh, to C two, general commercial. This is consistent with the general plan, policies that direct new development to within urban development boundaries. The Poplar Cotton Center, uh, community plan already designates as, as commercial reserve. There's a policy in there that the reserve designation, um, drops immediately upon a zone change, and this zone change can be initiated once the Williamson Act is canceled as of what you're looking at today. So, therefore, there is no requirement for a general plan amendment, because the way the community plan was set up, that, that when it meets these criterias as such, then it automatically reverts from reserve to actually, uh, commercial. Here's a vicinity map off on the left side showing the, the site, and, uh, the existing, um, general plan map on the, um, right, where it shows the de- designation of the stripe there is, uh, commercial reserve. This is the proposed zoning, C, uh, C two. Uh, if you look and see the shape, and, uh, into the, to the right is the parcel, uh, the site plan, you see that, that, the, there's frontage along one ninety, however, there will be no access, direct access to one ninety. Working with Caltrans, uh, they prefer the access over onto Road one ninety-two, so you see the, the, the leg going out. That's where, uh, vehicles will access from, uh, one ninety-two and enter into the, the parking area from, from that road rather than direct access. However, there is a requirement for, um, uh, curb and gutter along the frontage along one ninety, so they'll, they'll be making those improvements as part of this project.
Another quick question, Mr. Chair. I, I'm trying to, small, look at the small print here. So, the site, I'm looking at the, uh, bottom line, so where it would go, the road would go out to one ninety. Is that a two hundred and three foot depth? It looks to be two hundred and three feet to the edge of the property, then you have a parking lot, and then...
Right. Approximately there, yes.
So, it was, maybe it's been a long time since I've looked at the Caltrans regs, but it was a hundred feet. Last time I looked at it, it was a hundred feet from an intersection, and this would put that at two hundred and about thirty feet, so I don't understand why they wouldn't give them access. If it's not an issue to the owner, it's not an issue with me, but you're, you're looking at two hundred and forty, thirty or forty feet from that intersection.
Right.
Which is double of their minimum for a gap to have a driveway.
Absolutely. I, I understand that the Caltrans was concerned about some, uh, requirements as far as left turn lane, those types of situations for accessing directly onto the highway, not just the location as distance to the curb. So, this way, this is more acceptable to the developer, because they, there wouldn't need to be those improvements made to the state highway as well. Uh, one of the reasons, one of the reasons why you have this weird shape is because on that corner, there's actually a well, a community well, part of this, uh, Community Service District, so that's why this wasn't, ideally, it would have gone right on the corner, but because of that, uh, facility, that's why there's this, uh, configuration.
That answers my question, because that was going to be my question, laying out on the corner. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's an aerial shot of what you're looking at, and again, the well is right on the corner. Access will be on that log leg down at the south, and, and there will be frontage improvements, but there will be no direct access along one ninety. The proposed change of zone and Williamson Act is, is on less than five acres within a urban development boundary and served by public utilities, therefore, and consistent with the general plan, therefore, it would be, um, considered infill development and exempt per SEQA, Section fifteen-three-thirty-two, and the proposed actual development of the dollar general store is less than ten thousand square feet, and it also would be considered exempt per SEQA fifteen-three-oh-three. So, there is, uh, no substantive evidence that the change of zone and the Williamson Act will have any significant impact on the environment, and accordingly, a notice of, uh, exemption has been prepared that reflects the independent judgment of the county and completed in compliance with SEQA. So, with that, um, staff would recommend approval of the zone change and the Williamson Act cancellation by taking the actions detailed in your, uh, agenda packet in the draft resolution. That concludes, uh, staff presentation.
Any questions?
Uh, just a quick comment. I certainly, I'm glad my colleagues brought up the point about the, the Williamson Act cancellation fee going to the state of California, and I guess I, it might, we bemoan this every time it comes before us, and I just think we need to continue to pursue policy with the state of California. There's no justification whatsoever for them. We're the ones who take the hit on the property taxes over the years by giving agriculture the benefit of reduced taxation, so they can continue to farm. When there's an opportunity, recover, recover some of that money. There is no justification of the state of California receiving one dime of it, and, uh, we just need to continue to pursue that, I believe. But anyway, great pro- great project, and I'd love to see Dollar Tree and their expansion into our unincorporated communities.
General.
General. Excuse me. I meant general, Dollar General, uh, because, I mean, their, their expansion into our, you know, unincorporated communities provides opportunities for people, otherwise, they have nothing oftentimes. They have to go drive great distances to find just the basic necessities, and they can get so many things at these stores, and it's a great opportunity for the folks who live in those communities, as well as the tax generator for Tulare County. So, great project.
Any further questions?
Hey, this is a public hearing. A little open, public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak to this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Uh, Dollar, uh, in Terabella, we've got a family Dollar, so there's all kinds of Dollars out there, but...
Mr. Chair, great, uh, great project for this community. I'll motion to approve.
Hey, moved by Supervisor Cox? Second by Supervisor Worley. Cast your votes. Vote's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to, uh, item forty-two.
Seven.
Seven. I'm going to keep going, public, public hearings.
Seven.
Forty-seven?
No, seven.
Number, number seven.
Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you. I overlooked that one. Okay. Item number seven, public hearing, request from the Resource Management Agency to waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance, repealing qualified ordinance number ten forty-seven.
Good morning, Chairman Ennis, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Spot and Miss Fails Lane. Um, Ben Reese, interim director of the Resource Management Agency. Um, the item before you this morning is in regard to a franchise agreement with the Southern I just have a handful of slides, um, to go over some of the key terms of the franchise agreement. Um, through this agreement, um, Southern California Edison will be granted the authority to, uh, construct their facilities for the trans- their facilities for the transmission of electricity and distribution facilities within the county public right-of-way. And the term of this agreement will last twenty-five years from the effective date of this ordinance. For that privilege, SEC will pay the county a fee. There is two calculations for the fee, and they, it is determined by state law. The first calculation is basically two percent of the value of SEC, SEC's, um, facilities. That is the calculation that was used in the previous ordinance, which is set to expire next month. There's an additional calculation, which is one percent of the gross annual receipts. We believe that the two percent calculation will continue to govern because we're in a not-so-densely populated area. For calendar year two thousand fourteen, the county received approximately three-point-three million dollars in franchise fees from SEC.
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman, what is the estimate for the life of the contract?
Um, at three-point-three million a year for twenty-five years, over seventy-five million dollars. Another key item that's within the franchise agreement is that should the county require a realignment of a county roadway or a widening of a county roadway, SEC shall remove or relocate their facilities at SEC's expense. If and when any portion of the county territory is annexed by another jurisdiction, the rights and privileges granted under this agreement will be deemed amended, and the terms, if SEC has a franchise agreement with that jurisdiction, those, uh, terms will be applicable. With that, the requested action is to hold a public hearing at nine-thirty a.m. or shortly thereafter, waive the second reading, and adopt an ordinance, repealing uncodified ordinance one zero four seven, and adding a new uncodified ordinance pertaining to a franchise agreement with SEC, effective after approval by the Board of Supervisors and immediately after the franchise files written acceptance with the clerk of the Board of Supervisors, and direct the clerk to publish a summary of the ordinance and post a full copy of the ordinance within fifteen days of adoption, as required by law. That concludes my free presentation.
Questions?
Ben, I just wanted to make sure I understand this, and so these, these are actually state law mandated reimbursement costs or payment costs, is that, was I understood to say that?
Yes, that's correct.
So what is there that we negotiate with Edison? Is there anything that we negotiate, or does it basically take the state law and say we, we agree to the terms and conditions as opposed, imposed by state law and go forward?
Yeah, in terms of the fee, it's, it's governed by state law. There really wasn't any negotiation regarding the fees.
I don't know what the purpose of the public hearing is, but.
My question, I had a question to comment. The question was really about what other jurisdictions agreements with their utilities look like. I mean, is this pretty consistent? And if it's, if it is state law, it is going to be the same, but I was just gonna ask and see, is this kinda what Kings County has done, what Kern County, Fresno County, our neighbors have negotiated with Edison?
Yes, it's, it's similar to what other agencies have negotiated.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that our Southern California Edison rep, Mr. Calvin Rossi, wasn't trying to, you know, get to Tulare County to have a lower percentage or something. I don't know. Just thought I would check on that. And then I had a second comment, or my comment really was related to, um, one that I made a couple weeks ago regarding energy efficiency, and, and I think that we can look at that going forward with establishing some sort of funding mechanism for energy efficiency improvements, and it doesn't necessarily have to take place with the franchise fee agreement, is, is my thought after looking into it a little bit more, so, just wanted to follow up with that.
Well, I think this, I think this is actually connected to rate payers. Am I correct on that? It's percentage of the rate payers, money that is taken in by Southern California Edison?
Gross annual receipts.
Gross receipts, so that could change if a lot of people went to solar and those bills go down, it could change that, that amount of money that we receive.
Mr. Chairman, never fear. I'm sure that Edison will make sure they get the revenue that they need to stay in business, and, and I was gonna say that, you know, really, I appreciate the fact that it's based upon a percentage, because then as we deal with these situations of increasing or whatever may happen with the cost of, of electricity, we share in that, the, you know, obviously that we have increased costs as well. So, I think, as I'm not mistaken, I believe that Edison is our number-one real property tax payer, I think, in Tulare County. I think we receive more tax revenue from them than any other, other payer. And I, it's just an interesting situation where really you don't negotiate anything because if it's set by state statute, it is what it is, and it's kind of, kind of a interesting situation. But anyway, we certainly appreciate the funds which come to us from Edison, and we're glad to provide the, the place they can send their power.
Further questions? This is a public hearing, I will open it. Anybody wishing to speak to this issue may come forward at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
Approvals, Chairman.
Moved by Supervisor Worley.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Supervisor Vanderpool. Cast your votes, the vote is unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cal, for being here this morning. We appreciate anybody representing.
And thanks for your comments, Cal, much appreciated.
Okay, let's move on to item number eight, Strategic Growth Council Sustainable Highway Ninety-Nine Corridor Plan. Mr. Warsham.
Good morning again. I'm, I'm really excited about this project, so, but I, in the expedience, we will move this quickly. This presentation was about forty-five minutes to the planning commission, they really enjoyed learning more about what this is, but we'll, we'll go through this really quick and just hit the key spots. This grant, this, this, this plan was funded through a Prop eighty-four grant that was awarded by the Strategic Growth Council, and this plan really serves as a foundational study for future plans along the Ninety-Nine Corridor, and provides sustainable, um, planning practices and standards and strategies for, um, for the abundant natural resources and the agricultural lands as well as economic development opportunities in our, in our communities. Major components in developing this plan were the, were the preparation of a water analysis study, as well as an economic development marketing study that focused on the communities along the corridor, and then also we did our community plan updates, which, which really implemented some of this stuff already. I'd just like to say that an unnamed Supervisor Cox, one, one time when I first was appointed Economic Development Manager, I remember a quote that, "No more utterly useless studies and plans and reports." And, and this isn't that. This is a, a, a very good report that we've already been implementing, so we'll run through this fairly quick. The goals of, of this, uh, project is really to protect and sustain environmental resources, promote, uh, sustainable economic development, promote equity and fairness to these communities, preserve agricultural land and, and the aesthetics along the Ninety-Nine Corridor. You can see the specific objectives, but we won't go into detail on that. Okay, now it's my turn for this thing to screw up. As it relates to other plans and, and, and policies that we have, this, this is consistent with our general plan, with the TCAG RTP, the TCAG Sustainable Community Strategy, the San Joaquin Valley Blueprint, State Strategic Growth Council's objectives and goals, and state planning priorities, and, and, and others throughout. So, so this is very consistent, and it kinda ties in many of what we're already working with and, and doing, so it, it is consistent with, with that. The resources that were studied include population and demographics, the land use, housing, transportation noise, aesthetics. Infrastructure was a big piece of it, specifically the water analysis. Agriculture, air quality, greenhouse gases, environmental resources, general services such as fire protection, sheriff protection, those types of things are all analyzed within it. And economic development, again, a very, uh, as part of the appendix, and we actually have it printed as a standalone report to the, the corridor marketing study that was developed by a consultant that really highlights and analyzes a lot, and I'll go into a little bit further detail on a future slide. I just touched the, the community outreach and participation, this is a huge effort in all the communities along the Ninety-Nine. We, we had over seventy meetings, that, this is all working in conjunction with all of our other strategies as well as independently on this specific project. There was always translation services provided at these community meetings. The, the pictures here is, one of them is a engoshion, it's, it's a walkability audit, walking through the community, looking at the, the, the conditions as they are in the community with the citizens, for them to be able to point out their issues and concerns, because it's all about prioritizing based on what the community needs and wants are, rather than us sitting here in Visalia saying, "This is what you need. We want to reach out and hear from the community itself." Another picture is from one of our many, many workshops that we've held over the past few years. The economic development piece, it had a separate standalone, um, marketing analysis, and one of the key factors out of that was there was sixteen sites that were identified specifically that are ideal for potential development opportunities. You can see in the photo, that's actually a, a blow-up of Traver area, and you can see the identified in blue, those are the highway commercials along Sixth Street, up there just north and south of Merritt, as ideal opportunities. And actually, the area four just did recently sell, and we've already been talking to developers there. It's already commercial zoned, so we're looking into opportunities in that spot. So, the market study really focused on the key sectors, the, the industry sectors that, that we do here in Tulare County. Obviously agriculture's number one, manufacturing, distribution, and transportation, as well as hair, healthcare, highway commercial opportunities, and renewable energy. It actually identified some implementation actions, and, and actually, we are moving forward. Bear Program was something that we'd already been putting on our own, but independently in this consultant actually suggested the same thing that, that aligns with what we were starting to do. So, that, it's, it's good to get that reinforcement of what you're doing is really on the right target. Also, they talked about maybe taking the identified sites and creating some maps and some specifics about that, so we can use that as a marketing tool to businesses. And to identify any and all available incentives, and then create a, a economic development marketing initiative to really identify and, and market these, these spots as well as other opportunities to, to specific businesses and industries. And this is my favorite page, the implementation strategy of this. Again, it's not a useless, put-on-the-shelf type of plan, we're already implementing it. This was really designed for something to implement future plans, but we have already, we haven't waited that long. We're, we're right in implementing many of the features here. And I'd just like to point out, it was very interesting listening to the board matters this morning. Vanderpool, Supervisor Vanderpool mentioned meeting with the CSDs and seeing what we can do to help provide some technical assistance and see how we can do. Well, if you look here, this is one of the things that we're talking about, so we're really aligned. Supervisor Worley talked about the ultimate expansion of Ninety-Nine, it's, this is on this sheet too. Supervisor Ashida talked about goods movement and, and specifically freight rail lines. This is part of this as well. And then Chairman Ennis had mentioned, uh, community planning where we, we're able to get things ahead of time, so we're not having to do as many use permits and more by right opportunities, which again, this is right here, part of what we're doing. So, this was exciting. And you know, Supervisor Cox mentioned the positive statements regarding the RMA, and that's not listed here because that's just what we do now. Through, through the former director and our new interim director, we're really putting an emphasis on, on, on customer satisfaction and.
Hey, Mike, I just wanted to point out too, you sent us the presentation in advance, so maybe that's what Board of Supervisors.
Then you're saying I have more power than I thought, huh? It's mind control, because I, I did do this before I heard your comments, so I just wanna say that I, I think, but I think what that does, it really does show that we have a synergy and a unified, uh, front as far as the direction that this county is heading, and I think it's fantastic.
Mr. Chairman, if I may say, and don't forget the bus shelters.
Well, we're going to that, because I'm gonna go down this line, actually. I was gonna talk about the complete streets. We're, we're, we're going forward, designing the last four streets of phase two of complete streets, which is currently underway, but we've just got the authorization to move forward on Complete Streets Three, which will add another eleven communities to our Complete Streets programs. Community plan updates, we've already done three along the Ninety-Nine Corridor, there's two that are still underway, so that's moving forward. And then the ordinance amendments, we've done a number of ordinance amendments that align right with this plan as far as the mixed use, especially the mixed use, and then all of the other initiatives and whatnot that we've done. And then the promoting of long-term preservation of ag lands, your, your board is considering that in the next few weeks and meetings, as that goes forward. And then the infrastructure, like we said, I'm looking forward to the meeting next, next week to talk to the engineer from, from the Early Mart P D, to see what, what can be done to, to be able to provide those services to businesses that are ready, willing, and able to go, but right now, the hindrance is the lack of infrastructure and the expense associated with trying to get that. And then the other focus, again, is, as, as the C O mentioned, the transit system improvements, you know, we've, we're looking at, uh, potential route expansions and the installation of the bus shelters, including sidewalks and, and ADA ramps to be able to access those bus shelters and, and allow more of our residents to be able to utilize the, the transit system that we have, that really has a good emphasis at this point going forward. And I know that just last week, or a couple weeks ago, we had the Community Road Maintenance Program of fixing the roads within the communities. So we're really, we're really all on board, and, and to show that, that this plan was to help implement this stuff, but yet, we're in the midst of doing it. It's not something that we're looking forward to do, and we're, we've, we've taken the ball and are running right now with it. So with that, again, the focus of this plan is, is to create a mechanism to be able to measure the implementation of, of these types of goals and, and objectives. The guiding principle really is to adopt plans and policies that address all of these environmental concerns and, and provide for the, the safety and health and welfare of the residents along the Ninety-Nine Corridor. And, and planning studies are exempt from SEQUA, so, so there is, uh, there's an N O E that's associated with this. But I'd just like to say that the other piece of this is when we go for grant funding, this is a, a, a tool that we use to be able to leverage off, especially, one of the most successful areas is what we're doing with, with the complete streets. By, by able to have them designed to thirty percent, when we go out and we're in a competitive area trying to get a grant, if we have a project that is already thirty percent designed, or if we have adopted plans that include it as part of the plan, that goes so much further in getting, uh, the potential of getting awarded that grant than saying, "Oh yeah, we'd like to fix the street down here." So that strategy has been put in place just over the last few years, and it's very successful, and that's what we're looking for with this, this plan as well. So, I think... So, the request is for the, for a public hearing to adopt the statutory exemption for the plan and adopt and certify the Sustainable Highway Ninety-Nine Corridor Plan as accurate, and direct the Environmental Assessment Officer to file a notice of exemption with the county clerk. That concludes staff's report.
Questions, your comments?
Uh, just, just a quick comment. Great job, Mike. I, I think this is, uh, RMA did a fantastic job putting this thing together. I think the community outreach was very important in shaping what this plan ultimately looks like, and, and this is just really gonna help move our unincorporated communities, especially along the Ninety-Nine Corridor, forward, and that really is where our greatest economic development opportunities exist. So I think you did a fantastic job, great presentation, and I look forward to implementation and construction of projects as a result of this plan.
You know, I, I, I like, I just, for, I, I just wanna not be remiss, that I'd really like to acknowledge the staff that worked on this, because it's not just about me up here. Our interim director and the leadership that he presents, as well as our chief planners that were instrumental, Aaron Bach, Hector Guerra, Dave Bryant, a planner for Sung Kwan, and Eric Coyne, we all assisted and helped and collaborated in this, in this effort, and I think it was a good achievement all the way around.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, one thing I was, this is, thank you, Mike, for this presentation, and I concur with my colleagues, this is, this is great for Tulare County. I, my question really had to do with, I know that when we, with the demise of redevelopment funds, we just established a separate pot of money to take the tax revenue that ordinarily would've gone to redevelopment funds, and we set it aside to assist in the development of our communities. And so my question really is, how have we done in terms of integrating that? So we have these funds there, sometimes we have funds, but then there's not necessarily a, a way to integrate, you know? So as you say, as you look at opportunities for projects, and perhaps there's a need for some of, you know, me- for some of, you know, matching funds or that some additional dollars can help a project to move forward, do we have a mechanism in place as of today to access those funds?
Yes, that fund is a trust fund within the C O's office.
I understand that part of it. It's really the how part of it. How do we, we know it's there, we're glad it's there, we're glad it's growing, but are we utilizing those funds? And what is the mechanism for how we do that? Is that to take separate action for each time to come before the board of supervisors to approve it? Do we have a built-in program or criteria that allows the access of those funds without going through that process?
It's done two, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Worley, it's done two ways. Number one, either through an agenda item where a component of the agenda item will request a distribution of funds, or it's through the adopted budget process where money is transferred to RMA for specific projects that are identified using strategic management say, this is what our program will look like, and so, through negotiations with the C O, which I did as the director, that money is transferred as part of the budget process. But you will see from time to time, whenever we have these grant applications, like for the fire truck or to assist road projects where there may not be sufficient dollars to qualify through the road department, that's how we do it. But it's an integrated process through either generally the budget or on a case-by-case process, which is brought through your board.
Good, thank you.
Great presentation, Mike. I think for example, to see how this really works, you can look at the White River Project down in Rich Grove and how that's grown and attracted McDonald's and all these things that utilize the 99 corridor. Thanks for being proactive and thanks for being kind of the magnet that's going to draw these businesses to Tulare County, especially along the 190 corridor. With that, let's open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak to this issue? Public hearing is open.
Signal one?
Members of the public would like to correct you and say that it was Early Mart that has White River Plaza, so go Early Mart. And two, it's the 99 corridor, not the 190 corridor.
Oh, okay. We're talking about Porterville. I'm trying to always break Porterville in some...
That's next.
Great.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I also appreciate the plan and what RMA is doing on the 99 corridor. The one thing I want to caution RMA and the board of supervisors is the fact we may be thinking too small. I think in the next five years, you're going to see a substantial movement of industry moving to the valley, looking for sites. As I've often said in many meetings, is your Bay Area in Los Angeles is out of land to provide 40 acre, 100 acre industrial sites or distribution sites. The other part, their housing is so far out of line that the workers can't afford to live in the metropolitan areas any longer, and it's coming here. And all our state projections of population shows it's coming here. So, I want to make sure when we do the 99 corridor, we're thinking large enough to handle what's going to be coming toward us and we're prepared for the onslaught of industrial distribution and other businesses coming to the 99. And the key part of that is water and sewer. So, in zoning, but we, I think we can do the zoning part, it's the water and sewer that's the most important part.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Sheeda, board members, if I may say, I could not agree with the sentiment of you, and I know the rest of your board members, with regard to thinking big in terms of being very proactive, very strategic and very aggressive vis-à-vis economic development in the right areas, not in the ag land, but in the UDBs along the corridors where the development should go. It makes sense vis-à-vis site selectors and entrepreneurs that want to locate and expand. But as you recall, and this was a great opportunity for you reinforce what we've been doing for the last three years. General plan was adopted, community plans adopted, we upgraded them so that the zoning and the planning were in place to do what? Streamline right-to-building permits. So, we've laid that groundwork. The water and the sewer, through the drought, RMA, as you know, because you've seen the agenda items, has been very aggressive to try to upgrade and expand various facilities to help those disadvantaged communities either within or adjacent to urban development boundaries. With regard to the expansion of opportunity, the market study that was in this plan and the ag value chain study that was done by Fresno State provides the baseline or the foundation from which the target marketing plan, which will be led in the C O's office through the reorganization will occur, to try to focus exactly on what you've been communicating. So, the process has been in place incremental, but we're ready to think big right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, what's the board's pleasure on this?
I would move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Supervisor Vanderpool, second by Supervisor Sheeda. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous. Thank you. Okay, move on to item number 42, request from approval of position allocation increase.
Good morning, Chairman, Board, C O and County Council. I am Bill Harrison. I am the Assistant Director for Information and Communications Technology with the county. This request for a new position for our department and the necessary budget goes back to August of 2014 when your board selected a Thomson Reuters product called Amentum to replace our very old, old PIM system. We are having problems with the PIM system in that it is written in a language that is no longer taught, and our staff that understand that language, they want to retire. And so, this is, you could view this as the retirement program for a set of staff. We will be, in August of 2014, we adopted a strategy, your board adopted a strategy that we would allow other counties to go ahead of us in the implementation of this software. This software has been chosen by a large number of California counties for this purpose. And Riverside in particular and Monterey County are both ahead of us, and we've been visiting their sites, learning from them. Thomson Reuters will be coming onsite in April to begin our implementation. It is now time that we begin hiring up staff to facilitate that implementation. The implementation, just because of the cycle of time of tax collection and assessment, will take six years. So, we're going to start now, and this will be the first hire. This was included in the proposed budget that was presented to you in August of 2014. We just did not implement it. Now, this particular individual will work with the vendor's staff to assess our business processes and develop the configuration of the Thomson Reuters software to match our business processes so that we are in line with where we have been and how we are going forward as a county. The Williamson Act is extremely important to us. That is slightly different than some of the other counties that have gone before us. And so, that is an area that we particularly want to focus on. There are currently funds that were approved in this budget under the professional and specialized expenses. We are proposing in this agenda item to move those funds to a line that would allow us to expend them for our staff. It's about $25,000 through the remainder of this fiscal year, and then the position will be in the new budget and will be a regularly budgeted position. So, any questions?
Questions in the board?
Quick one, so currently, there's no analysts to positions open, vacancies that have been held open for years, all the positions are filled?
All the positions are filled. We do have a retirement coming shortly though. Thank you.
Real quickly, you indicated a six-year implementation, so we will be on the mainframe for that entire six-year period?
No, we will not be on the mainframe for that entire time. We are expecting the mainframe to have to last another four years, but the data will be available to us. And we want Thomson Reuters assistance with that first couple of cycles of assessment and tax collection.
We hope we have enough baling wire and bubble gum to keep that system going for the next...
Yes, sir. You will see in the budget, the upcoming budget, you will see more baling wire and bubble gum to keep that system going.
Well, this is a long time coming, and so, we are on the right track and we're heading in the right direction, so that's... Okay, what's the board's...
Motion to approve, Chairman?
I'll second that.
Moved by Supervisor Worley, second by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Presentation. Okay, go on to item number 43, approve of greenhouse gas emissions inventory update. Mr. C O.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. While the speaker is addressing the podium to go through the PowerPoint presentation, let me just introduce the subject. Item 43 is essentially another aspect of the implementation of the settlement agreement reached by this board and the litigants a number of years ago. Essentially, it is to address greenhouse gas emissions, and part of that task was to hire a qualified expert, develop a scope of work, and then to do the necessary analysis and come forward to the board with a report with regard to greenhouse gas emissions. That matters before you. There are two other items with respect to this settlement. That is to monitor and track a number of items concerning the Climate Action Plan and to assist with annual progress reports. They are not due today. The element that is being presented today is a requirement of the agreement, and it will demonstrate another aspect of compliance vis-à-vis the settlement. So, Mr. Dave Mitchell, who was the qualified expert that the county has retained, developed the scope of work, the report, and it's part of your agenda item, and now, Mr. Mitchell, if you could proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spada. Chairman, members of the board, Dave Mitchell with our company's First Karma Solutions, formerly Michael Brandman Associates, fired a couple of years ago, but continue with the same kind of work, and it expanded quite a bit too internationally with the new company. Well, as Mike said, the purpose of the inventory update is to add some new source categories required by the settlement agreement, and also, in the process, it improves the inventory itself because it has a more comprehensive look at the different sources in the county. Also, the update that was originally prepared for the Climate Action Plan or the CAP, it was updated with the other emission inventory categories. And then, part of the process, we showed the progress achieved to date and made new forecasts, latest models and modeling assumptions. The overview of what's changed or what's new is the, there's now a government operations inventory, which is the sources that are actually under the control of the county operations, like the fleets and use, energy use in buildings and the actual facilities that are owned and operated by the county. Then, the new stats for the community emission inventory was, quite a few different categories were added. One is residential propane consumption, which was not included in the last one, it was natural gas, and with a lot of the people in rural areas, they needed propane, the used propane, it is a significant category. Residential wood burning was added, agricultural green waste burning, fertilizer use, also aviation emissions from the flights that come in and out of county airports, and then train locomotive emissions from the trains passing through the county, and then some emissions from sewage treatment and gas flooring. On the updated source categories, excited things, emissions inventories for mobile source, both on-road and off-road were updated with the latest assumptions and models. Energy consumption, electricity, natural gas was fully updated with data provided by the utilities and then the projections out to the future. Solid waste from landfills, from the county landfills, water use and wastewater processing for the updates. Then, looking at specifically, the vehicle miles traveled, VMT is the important category, and we used data from the TCAG and the Air Sources Board to update the baselines and provide forecasts. Southern California S and P Z E both provided uses data that's fairly current. Part of it was in 2015, and so, we have the latest year available for those sources. And then, also for the detailed emission analysis, for the, the county had already prepared detailed analyses for the wastewater treatment plants and the landfills, separate engineering studies that were required by the state, that data for the update. Airport's operations data was available for individual takeoff and landings by aircraft type, and we used that to create an inventory. And for lots of, the inventory report itself is full of details and the assumptions of what were used, available for your preview. Just a little bit of the results, the government operations inventory is, as you can see, the big blue part, that's the mobile source fleet, which county has a very large fleet of different kinds of vehicles, from diesel trucks and service vehicles to a lot of passenger vehicles, and then also some different kinds of equipment that are considered mobile sources. Next category is the electricity, was, you know, the county operates traffic lights, traffic, or street lights, traffic lights, billing, lighting and cooling, or to use a fair amount of energy, and thus be the second and third largest, or the heating's the third largest with the natural gas, all our sources from the solid waste generated from county, you know, input into the waste stream. On the community inventory, this, the original community inventory was prepared, included the dairies and agricultural emissions. This one added in a couple more sources, the nitrogen-based fertilizer and the ag burning. So, the, you know, it comprises a pretty large portion of the pie with 85% of the emissions. Now, the, for the dairy, it's going through its own process, dairy and feedlots going through its own process, but this is provided just to provide a comprehensive look at all the inventory sources. The rest of the sources are the, we refer to as development-related, it's things from houses and businesses and employment opportunities and things that generate activities in that area. And the largest chunk, which is really common around the state, is the other darker blue, the 735,000 metric tons, or 8% of the whole inventory is from the transportation side, which, you know, your vehicles, off-road and on-road. And then, you know, very similar to the government inventory as far as fractions go of, you know, with the electricity and natural gas, and then the water wastewater for the, to wrap up the inventory. Probably the most important slide of the bunch, looking at what is the trend, you know, we looked out into the future and up to the current, how's the county doing? And, you know, one of the important things that happened, you can see the little dip in the population growth from 2010 to 2015, and that actually carries on from the other inventory from 2007 also. So, the population growth has been slow, reflecting the recession or slow recovery. And on the top line, that's the absolute emissions that have been occurring. So, we've got a downward trend even though population is growing through 2015. And then, for the later years, the population subs are assumed to, from the TCAG, TCAG forecasts and the state D O F forecasts are soon to pick up again, you know, for Tulare County and grow at a faster rate. And so, even with that faster rate of growth, the emissions still decline out to 2020 and kind of flatten out to the 2030. And one thing that's not in here is, this includes the benefits of adopted regulations that reduce greenhouse gas, like there's the PAVLY I and II motor vehicle standards that help reduce or increase vehicle miles per gallon, and there's numerous other state programs, and then there's the renewable portfolio standard. So, the 2020, there's going to be 33% renewable energy statewide, and S C E and P Z E will both see that. And P Z E thinks they're going to way exceed the 33% by 2020. So, that, and then, we already hear from the governor, new initiatives out there like the 50% renewable portfolio by 2030, so those are not reflected, and now, I think the reduction's down, and likely, there will be more regulations on motor vehicles after, between now and say, 2020, 2025, that'll keep the trend line down over the outer years.
Dave, I'm just trying to understand those population numbers. Is that the growth? Because I mean, we have over 400 and some thousand people.
It's unincorporated only.
Unincorporated only, thank you. Okay.
And with that, that's up for any questions, or I'll turn it back to Mike.
Does the board have any questions?
Well, I just have one comment. This agricultural green waste burning could be a problem for us by using, we're losing most of our biomass plants Tulare County throughout the state, and so, you're going to see a little more agricultural burning, I think, in the future than we have in the past, but that would be the only thing I can say. So than we have in the past, but that would be the only thing I can say.
And what, what comment is, you know, this is a, a, a process that's not really stable. You know, the things change quickly over time and, and, like, right now we have, uh, really cheap gasoline, so V M T nationwide and, and, uh, so those things are, that's why you do periodic reviews to see how you're doing. And, and then our next part with the tracking system will get you like a snapshot every year to be able to, how it's going on a regular basis.
Supervisor Vanderpoel.
You know, I, I just had a question and was, uh, kind of interested in, in these projections, um, how much is considered for the amount of carbon that is sequestered by agriculture, i.e. trees and other green plant matter? Uh, I mean, because this is talking about the unincorporated areas and if you think about how many trees are either going in, coming out, um, just maybe enlighten us a bit on that.
The, this does not include the sequestration of the carbon in the soils.
Okay.
Very complex and varies crop by crop and, and.
Yeah.
So anyway, it was above the, our scope on this particular effort to come up with a number. Dave is, uh, doing research in that and, but most of the, the bigger inventories actually just, uh, kind of give up on, on trying to keep a track, a close track on sequestration.
Yeah, and I just kind of want to, you know, I'm sure you're going to be involved at, uh, in, in different entities as these studies go forward. Um, you know, it's just a lot of, uh, you know, when you look at a chart like this and you see how much agriculture is responsible for, I, I just really hope that people keep in mind that when they go to the grocery store, uh, look how much that's on those shelves that comes from agriculture and comes from Torrey County. Um, you know, and I, I just really ask that you, uh-huh, in your role, um, not, not that I don't, I don't think we're going to be paying for it, but, uh, in your role, just by doing this work for Torrey County, you know how important agriculture is, uh, to our county, uh, but into feeding the world as well. Um, and, and that, you know, yeah, it's a, it's a major culprit in producing greenhouse gas, uh, but look at the benefit that that produces as well. And I know that's not something that you can quantify in this study, uh, but I just ask that you maybe make note of that and be our advocate in other areas of the state.
Yes, sir. And as an absolute, uh, when you look at it, anything you're built, you're working on a world economy, especially for Agus, it services the whole nation. So it's, it's a really a different thing than your local emissions that you're doing to support your own people living here and, and working here.
Yeah. Thank you.
I was just going to make one comment about what Supervisor Vanderpoel was talking about. And, you know, most, unless you're going to take the woody products and make something furniture out of them or something like that, it, it is cyclical. So you, you grow up, you sequester carbon, then you grind them up and burn them in a plant.
Yeah.
But the one area that, that could be seeing change over time will be, uh, Ags, the way we do agriculture in terms of non-cultivation, because the ability to sequester long-term in soil, uh, is a different matter altogether. You, you, the ability, if you, if we go to more non-tillage or low tillage, you can see tremendous sequestrations of carbon in the soil and that could be more of a long-term situation as, as opposed to, I mean, it's not that there isn't, a tree could live for twenty years, so there is a twenty-year cycle, but it is cyclical.
Yeah.
Well, it's cyclical in some crops.
Yeah, citrus is a hundred years.
But, yeah, we have a grow that's a hundred and fifteen years old and just picked a thousand boxes an acre off of it, so, you know. Depends on your crop.
So you're saying old things can still produce, right? As I look to this side of my, uh...
You're looking at me down here.
I'm glad you were looking past me. But on page six, that Supervisor Vanderpoel has pointed out, to me, that's a big target on the back of agriculture.
I agree.
And that really concerns me. What do we do to mitigate this or what do we, what's this really mean to us in agriculture?
The, uh, a lot of that's going to be the dairies and we have the whole, whole plan going forward with, not, not me personally, but the county has a whole plan going forward on the, on the dairy side that'll address, uh, some of the methane issues with, with that. And then on the nitrogen side, you're absolutely right, part of it's nitrogen management. You don't want this nitrogen, you want to put as much nitrogen you need for your crops. You don't want a lot of it escaping the atmosphere or getting washed into the rivers. So there's some mutual benefit things that are going on that'll reduce that by itself.
The other question I'd like to ask is, what is the number of emissions from the state of California compared to the world? What percent are we?
Have a little chart in here on, on the actual document. The, uh, the state's inventory. I have one with, uh, like, United States is approximately, you know, six, six billion metric tons of emissions out of, uh, let's see where to go, out of forty-three billion. For the United States alone is this, is, you know, just a fraction of the world emissions. And on the, uh, on the state side, state emission inventory for twenty-twelve is four hundred and sixty million metric tons. So it's less than one percent of, of the, you know, the world's emissions are from California.
Give us the difference between, again, the Fed, the, the, the United States versus California. The United States is six billion, right?
Yeah, the United States is, uh, approximately, approximately six billion.
Of forty-two. I know, but, but the state, what is the state?
Like point, point, uh, four-six billion. So like less than point five, less than half a billion.
And, and, and the significance, I think, of what Supervisor Sheed's getting at is, California really has a small CO2 footprint because we don't have cogeneration, we don't have coal-generated power plants, which is a major source of carbon emissions in the rest of the country or much of the country. We have a lot of natural gas. We still have some residual nuclear. So our, our CO2 emissions are low compared to the rest of our, the country, which means as we seek to reduce emissions, it's expensive. There's no, there's no, there's very little low-hanging fruit. So, you know, you can go to West Virginia and shut down a nineteen forty-six power plant that, that's, you know, emitting tons of CO2 because of it's burning coal. We don't have that equivalent in California. And so it makes it very difficult and, and sometimes I think people lose track of that issue that is, you know, California sometimes lives a little bit in a, in a bubble, if you will, a vacuum. We're, we're separated from the rest of the country. We don't realize the differences that we have here. But the policy decisions made in Sacramento about going to thirty percent, fifty percent renewable, where we're paying fifty percent more for our power probably than the rest of the country, is lost on most people. They don't realize that. That's what's happening. But industry does. And so when they look at where they're going to locate their industries or where they're going to expand, when they look at, if, if they're, if they have a big use, power of use, they look someplace else because it's so expensive to operate in California. So those are very important for us to keep in mind from a policy standpoint. And I realize we don't control those things here, but as we look at working in Sacramento and Washington, D.C., the, the continued efforts for us to remember what the consequences of these policies can be far-reaching for, for California and for the San Joaquin Valley.
Well, I think that's my point, is we've regulated ourselves into a corner that we've killed industry in the state of California and we only have an impact of less than one percent. And whatever we do in the state of California is basically insignificant compared to the world. And the other part is the state of California using the model of the, of the world puts a real big target on the back of agriculture, which further increases the cost of food. It doesn't make any sense. We're not getting a return on our investment if we're less than one percent of the problem. And I think that's what Supervisor Worley's saying too, is what's the return on investment that we're forcing our residents in our state to, to address climate change. We're not getting near the return for the investment. And I think that's something that needs to be pointed out. And especially when there's enough people to have a target on agriculture anyway to page six puts just, to me, a bigger target on our back.
I agree.
Chairman, if I may just make, make an observation, uh, I certainly support the comments of the board, but let me say with regard to agriculture and in particular the dairies, as part of the settlement, a dairy climate action plan was required to be prepared. It has been prepared and is now being circulated for public review as part of the draft, D I R, for the amendment, Animal Confinement Facilities Plan. In doing so, perhaps the most qualified dairy consultant was hired in the state to assist in the preparation of that document and working in consultation with the industry. So the best foot forward is being presented.
Well, I, I agree that we are doing that and we're investing, we're making our residents invest so much in this, but what's the return on the investment? It's not there. So I'm sticking up for the dairy guys or any other producer. It's just not there.
We recognize as part of our Ag, uh, Crop and Livestock Report that, uh, the dairy industry produces over two billion dollars just in milk value alone, let alone the multiplier effect. So we acknowledge and, and support your observation.
I, I'm sorry, I'm going to say something after all. I, I've been looking at this page six for the whole time, what we're, what we're in essence going to do. I, I don't know that we're putting a target on the back of agriculture. You're forcing the, the rest of the residents who aren't in agriculture to drive down all those emissions to compensate for that. So everyone's being punished. So I think agriculture is going to be punished more unfairly, but everyone's being punished. That's really all I, all I wanted to say, that, you know, it's, if we want to drive these emissions down, there's not a whole lot you're going to get to do out on the agricultural side. We have great partners with the Air Board and other agencies like that who are helping to replace aging equipment, you know, the, the emitters and things like that that are doing poorly. You know, we're doing that, but still, it's, it's Ag and so where we're going to, you know, what we're going to do is we're going to force the people to do even more than the fair share.
I think I'd like to point out on, on the targets in the Climate Action Plan, you know, when it was adopted several years ago, that the actual target was for the development-related without agriculture. So those numbers on, on slide seven is, uh, we had a per capita emission rate of, uh, eight point one in, uh, twenty fifteen. The projected one for twenty-twenty is eight, eight point one, uh, metric tons per person in Torrey, unincorporated Torrey County. The goal is eight point eight. So it's, it's way ahead of the goal based on things that happened already, mainly regulatory that's, uh, uh, cleaning up the development-related emissions. So they're getting credit in, in this slide, you know, they're going to separate it out just for that purpose.
When you bring into that equation the millions and millions of trees that are dying in our national forests, they're no longer, no longer absorbing carbon, they are producing carbon.
Yep.
There's another factor. So what is the board's pleasure?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, it is respectfully requested that your board approve the greenhouse gas emissions inventory update and direct the C A O in concert with the R M A to take all necessary and proper action to implement your direction.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Cox, second by Supervisor Sheed. Cast your votes. Votes is unanimous. Thank you.
David, we weren't beating you up. Okay.
Okay, let's, uh, take up item number forty-four. C A O, you want to speak to this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you, members of the board. Very briefly, the matter before you is a request to take off calendar the Agricultural Conservation Easement Program and direct the C A O in concert with R M A to refer the matter back to the Agricultural Policy Advisory Committee for further consideration and recommendation and to take all necessary and proper action to implement the direction of the board of supervisors. Just, just free background, if I may. Through, uh, discussions and negotiations with the Sierra Club, the, there has been an extension of time to May twenty-fourth, twenty sixteen, by which to bring the matter back for consideration and approval by the board. I appeared before A P A C to discuss this proposed recommendation and that a recommendation has, has come back to you requesting that a joint workshop be set up after May fourth with the Ag Advisory Committee to consider this matter. I understand that, uh, A P A C is going to be having a separate meeting beforehand to discuss their approach with regard to this matter, which, which the C A O and I'm sure the board would support and that, uh, let the process continue. That's it in a nutshell.
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
Moved by Supervisor Cox, second by Supervisor Vanderpoel. Cast your votes. Ananmas. Okay. Go on to item number forty-five, Request from County Administrative Office to receive an input and provide direction regarding proposed amendments to state legislative platform.
Good morning. Debbie Vaughn, County Administrative Office. Um, the purpose of today's meeting is just to update the board on, on state legislative issues. We'll go through the ones, we'll go through all of the items, but, um, I'll just give you an update on the ones that have had any status change, she, um, last year. There's also a couple of items included in here, um, suggested by, um, various people within the county that might, the board might want to consider as additions to the platform. Um, and then there is, of course, the option for the board to modify, delete, add, um, or otherwise amend any of the items on the platform. And then the last thing is, um, the board is scheduled to make its annual trip to Sacramento on March ninth and so the request is that the board select which of the items, um, that we're going to be discussing that you would like to focus on during that trip. Okay, so the first item is just, um, increased funding for dairy digester programs. Um, as you recall, last year, this was a request. Um, it's tied to the dairy program and the recommendation from staff is that we retain this as a, a platform issue. The next, um, section falls under environment and natural resources and there's some variety within here. Um, the first is forest management. Um, and staff would suggest that this be retained as a platform issue, um, but that we modify the request. If you were to call, at this time last year, um, the board was advocating for the state of California to, uh, request additional designation under section eighty-two oh four of the Ag Bill. And that was the section that allowed for reduced environmental on three thousand acres, um, for insect and disease control. Um, that has happened. It happened this summer and so now the, um, the majority of the forest lands in our county do fall under that designation. So the next step would be, um, you know, what do we want to ask the state to do as a follow-up to that? Um, it is federal lands, but there's a couple of options. One is to ask the governor to continue to advocate on a federal level for proclamation of emergency due to the tree mortality. There's also been some discussion about, um, asking the state to partner with the federal government, uh, potentially with cap and trade funding or another source, um, to try to do something about the tree removal. It does impact California watershed and other infrastructure, so there is a, a strong interest that the state should take in that. Um, so, um, this is an item where the board's direction is needed as to how you'd like to move forward on this one. The next two items have to do with city reform and unfortunately, there has not been any change in the status, so these are both still applicable. The next, the next eight items, um, if you recall from last year, came from the disadvantaged community study. Uh, one of the items was added last year, but seven of the eight of them came from the study. One that was added, um, is certainly falls in line. Private well assistance, that was, if you recall, um, Assemblymember Mathis had a bill in last year to request low-interest loans for, um, homeowners or, so that they could afford to put wells into their property. Um, that bill did not pass through the legislature. However, the governor did set some money aside, um, and, and directed, you know, that it would be for well assistance. However, it was very vague. Denise England, our Water Resources Manager, met with the Department of Water Resources last year and what they indicated to her is that they were looking at that source of money, um, uh, to assist with East Porterville and some other areas without the state, so not necessarily a low-interest loan. We do benefit from it, but not, um, not in the way that we thought we were going to. We do benefit from it, but not in the way that we thought we were going to. So, this item, staff recommendation is to retain as a platform issue. Like I said, it is part of the, one of the goals that came out of the DAC study. The next one is sustainable operation and maintenance revenue streams, and this just has to do with Prop 218 reform, and this also would be, there's not been any progress on that, and it would be recommended to retain as a platform issue. Streamlining the funding process, this had to do with the fact that in prior bond issuances, only about 2% of the funding came, was directed to disadvantaged communities. They were missing out because they didn't have shovel-ready projects, and so the request that the board discussed last year was to allocate by region funding, and Supervisor Rashida last year expressed some concern about, you know, whether the county would lose the money altogether, and so the request was modified, you know, that there would be a minimum amount, a set minimum amount, kind of like a formula program with transportation, where the region would definitely get a certain set aside for DAC projects, and that could not be transferred for another purpose or use. In some ways, there's some progress. The transfer to, from CDPH to the State Water Resources Control Board has helped a little bit in that the state water board now offers some technical assistance grants. They do that through nonprofits like self-help, and so disadvantaged communities, they will direct self-help or another nonprofit to go out to a disadvantaged community, provide technical assistance, and then they fund that. So, it does help in some ways in the obstacles of getting the funds out. And this item, item number seven, and the one that we're gonna talk about in a minute, item number nine, are tied to some new potential grant funding that we're going to be potentially looking at, and how that would help is it's a program for disadvantaged involvement in the IRWIM process, which is the Integrated Regional Water Management Process. So, that's another way that resources might be directed to disadvantaged communities. Overall, the recommendation on this is to still retain it as a platform issue, because although there's some little fixes that are happening, monitoring how much funding actually gets sent out to disadvantaged communities is still viewed as a priority item for the county. The next item, and this is the one that was added last year, this is streamlining the actual process, and this has to do with the issue that the state will not let anyone apply for funding unless there's an entity that can apply. And entity formation can take anywhere from 12 to 24 months, and nothing can be done on a project. So, you can't start design, you can't do anything, and so this was added last year as an ask, can we do entity formation and design at the same time? The county has done a workaround in some cases, and that the county's taken on the role as being applicant, so that the process can move forward, but this is still an issue going forward. So, we would suggest that that was retained as a platform item. Number nine is establish a regional disadvantaged community coordinator, and this was the concept that we talked about last year, where there is a one-stop shop where disadvantaged communities can go, and they can find out what resources are available, they can get directed to technical assistance, you know, all those things that end up being obstacles, and that's why it was tied to number seven, which was the amount of money that they get out, because that lack of technical assistance is part of the issue. Last year, your board said you would want that the state would fund that position. The grant that is potentially available, the disadvantaged community involvement grant that we're gonna talk about in just a minute, the group that's been preliminarily working on that, one of their initial recommendations is going to be that if they get that funding, they hire one or two disadvantaged community coordinators, but the grant is just a two-year grant. So, if they get the grant, if they make that recommendation, and if those individuals are hired, it's still just a temporary fix because it's only for two years. So, staff would suggest that this is retained as a platform issued and monitored to see if we can get permanent funding for it. Number 10 is to continue pre-planning and local entity formation assistance programs, and this ties back to the entity formation issue. There used to be money when there was Prop 84, they called them LIFA, which is an abbreviation for local entity formation assistance, to help communities go through that entity formation process. There was funding, technical support, and now that funding has been expended and it's not been replaced. So, unless entities can pull from these other pockets of money or counties help them, there's no funding for this. So, staff would suggest that this is retained as a platform issue as well. Number 11 and 12, and again, these are, we're still on recommendations from the disadvantaged communities study. The first one, if you recall, is kind of the conflict between safe drinking water, there's a mandate to provide farm labor housing, yet we also want the water that's provided to be safe drinking water. This has not been resolved, so staff plus that this is retained as a platform issue. The last one, this is the issue that, and the example was in North Visay, I believe, where they were doing the project, and the state was willing to fund the project but would not fund to increase the pipe size for the fire flow. This is an ongoing issue and is, again, recommended to be retained as a platform issue. Okay, number 13 and 14 are recommended additions to the platform. The first one is the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act provided funding of $10 million for planning grants. However, those, the planning grants were allocated based on planning areas, and it didn't matter how many critically overdrafted basins were in that area, it didn't matter what the economic status was of the area, the maximum that could be awarded was $500,000. The state has made their recommendations on how to allocate that funding, and the total allocations are 6.6 million out of a total of 10 million. So, there's funding that's remaining, and what staff recommended is recommending is that the Department of Water Resources allocate the remaining $3.4 million to our region based on the fact that we have three critically overdrafted basins, and we do qualify as an economically distressed area. And that would assist us, both because of the geographic size, the number of bases, and some of those technical challenges that we already experienced with moving forward with the SIGMA planning. Number 14, this is the grant that I've been referring to, and this is funded through Prop 1. There are 12 funding areas within the Integrated Regional Management Involvement, and there's $3.4 million available for this planning grant. And there's preliminary work being done on this, and the ask would just be that the board supports that application when it's ready to be prepared. And again, this ties back to providing technical assistance, getting a disadvantaged coordinator, and it's a two-year grant program. Water supply south of the Delta and surface water storage are also remaining items. The water supply south of the Delta is just the request to ask the water board to use maximum flexibility with the water releases. Number 16, your board may want to modify this one, given the level of involvement with the JPA and working on Temperance Flat. What it currently states is that it's a request that the $2.7 million that's allocated for surface storage be directed towards surface storage projects such as Temperance Flat, and that the state request that those projects be expedited. There is one proposal to add language in here that says, "The State Water Resources Control Board has criteria regarding a public benefit. What is unclear is really how they're going to meet that." There's been some concern for some water districts that some of the surface storage projects may not benefit them because they're concerned that the water is all going to go to public benefit. So, this would be an ask to request clarification and maximum flexibility from the State Water Resources Control Board in evaluating whether or not a storage project meets the criteria for water quality and ecosystem public benefits. And then there may be additional items that the board wishes to add to this particular topic.
If I might drill quickly in that, you know, the bond only allows for the payment of up to half of the cost of a project like Temperance Flat, and they're only gonna fund that portion of it, which is the public benefit portion. So, it's a little bit of a two-edged sword in that you wanna kind of maximize the public benefit portion of it to access up to 50% of the value of the cost of the project from the state water bond, but then that means 50% of it's for public benefit. Now, there is hope that there will be public benefit and also private benefit, that is, you put more water down in San Joaquin and you capture more of it and return it in some way to agricultural irrigation purposes. But it is an interesting kind of a dynamic that you, and this is a big issue, you know, when we look at full funding of this, the expectation is that we're hoping to get, let's say, a billion dollars from the state water bond, a billion dollars hopefully from the federal government, and then it's a two-and-a-half billion dollar project, so there's a half billion, $500 million has to be made it from someplace, and you're looking for who are the beneficiaries that would pay for it. And no one's gonna pay for something that they don't think they're gonna get something for, so that is a big issue. It's kind of a comprehensive issue, I guess, the way of putting it, but I'm not sure what we're gonna ask for when we get to Sacramento.
And I think it's also important to point out that I don't think it's essential that we limit our focus to just Temperance Flat. I do think that if, let's say, Sites Reservoir, because Temperance Flat has a lot of parts, moving parts, that all have to work together to make happen and be effective for this area. So, I do think that it's important that we don't limit our focus to just Temperance Flat. If Sites Reservoir were to move forward, I think that would be very helpful for this area as well in terms of creating new water that wouldn't drain our supply here. So, I wanna make sure that we just make advocacy towards surface water storage in general rather than super-specific.
To respond to that quickly, the JPA's position is that it's not either-or, but both. We exceed $2.7 billion for surface water projects, and the expectation is that it might be a billion for Sites and a billion for Temperance Flat. But actually, it's interesting, we actually are expecting to have the Bureau come up, finish up their feasibility study, and Temperance will come out as feasible, financially feasible, technically feasible. As of right now, that's not true about Sites. Sites, they're back trying to recalculate the, or recreate the project because right now it doesn't pencil. So, in some respects, even though they got started earlier than we did from having a JPA engagement, we're ahead of them in the same point, we're probably having a favorable study completed by the Bureau here, we hopefully, we saw the preliminary study and they're just finishing it up. So, it's, but it's not either-or. It is, we're looking for surface water treatment projects, I mean, and we expect, we're supporting Sites and our own project here locally.
Okay, moving on, the next section is Government Finance and Operations, and staff would recommend that the recommendation remain to add fines and penalties as items that could be added on the tax lane. The next area is Health and Human Services. The first item is Foster Care and Adoption Assistance Payments, and last year Supervisor Wurley brought up the fact that adoption assistance payments go on for a very long time. We do, as a refresher, foster care is set at a baseline of what our caseload was in 2009, and that was done with 2011 realignment. This year, we actually received a lot of growth funding, which may or may not continue in the future, it depends on the overall state of the economy, but the expectation is that that caseload is gonna continue to go up and the funding sources unstable. There's also Health and Human Services expecting in late March that there's a new rate calculation that will be coming out for foster care that will be implemented effective January 2017. So, as of today, they don't know what that's going to be or what it's going to look like, but this is definitely a thing that has the potential to be very costly to the county in the future, and so staff is recommending that it is also retained as a platform issue.
Debbie, is that means-tested, or does any foster parent adoption result in receiving financial benefits, no matter what the income is of the adopting parents?
Yes.
Yes, it's means-tested? It's not?
It's not means-tested. The next item is County Veteran Service Officers, and Health and Human Services indicated that there is a higher degree of permanent funding in place, but again, this is one of those items that tends to fluctuate over time and would be, I don't know why it says "add as a platform issue," that's a typo on my part, be retained as a platform issue. Number 20 is Medi-Cal and Medicare reimbursement rates, and this is the ongoing issue that we've had for quite some time, where reimbursement rates are low. It causes a lot of difficulty across the board in retaining, you know, medical providers, specialists in the area, as well as access to, you know, some of the newer medications within the county. You know, nearly half of the population is enrolled in either Medi-Cal or Medicaid, so this becomes a critical issue, and staff recommends that that's retained as a platform item. The next item was suggested, I believe Supervisor Vanderpool, you were the one that brought this up, the Managed Care Organization Fix, and this is just addressing the Managed, the MCO tax. It did pass through Conference Committee yesterday, and it's going to the floor in the Senate on Thursday. At this point, it's looking positive that it may pass, but at risk is, you know, over a billion dollars in funding from the federal government. Right now, California system is not in compliance because California does not tax all insurance providers. The governor came up with a proposal to tax all providers, and then the ones that were not being taxed before to give them a credit in another type of tax. It does generate more money than it generated in the past, and again, it's looking like it might move forward. At the time the agenda item was prepared, that was not the case, so the recommendation would be that it still be added as a monitoring item in the event that something, you know, happens in the last minute and it doesn't, it's not successful.
Does the bill allow, is there some benefit or relief for nonprofits such as counties and cities and government? In other words, one of the things I understand they're talking about with for-profit corporations is increasing the tax, but then giving them a break on the corporate tax that they pay to the state of California. So, the offset is a net, there's no additional expense to the insurance companies, and therefore there ought to be no increase in people's premiums. But that doesn't apply to counties where we don't pay corporate income tax, so there's no way of offsetting that. If they just say, "You're now gonna charge this tax," it's gonna become a burden on either the county or upon the employee to pay that tax.
I have not seen any language that addresses local counties. The taxes on the insurance companies, so the maybe naive hope would be that those who are getting an offset are not going to be passing that along in terms of increased premium costs. It's supposed to, it's not, it's supposed to leave everything status quo. The whole purpose of it is simply to be in compliance with federal legislation. It's not to create, and it's not supposed to create an additional tax burden, and that's the reason that the offsets are in place. The next two items were on the platform last year. The first one has to do with Prop 47, and the reason this comes from mental health is that state parolees, when they need mental health substance abuse treatment, that funding comes from the state. But Prop 47 changed a lot of felony crimes to misdemeanors. Misdemeanors end up being primarily county responsibility, so those individuals that have mental health substance abuse treatment issues then become the county's responsibility financially. So, this item is not a discussion of whether Prop 47 is appropriate or not appropriate, it's a discussion of the impacts on the county's Health and Human Services, particularly Mental Health Department, and it would be recommended that this is retained as a platform issue.
And will we quantify that?
Yeah.
As we go up to Sacramento, it'd be great to have our own local story in terms of the actual ad costs or a projection.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
And the last item under Health and Human Services is the Mental Health Capital Facilities, and this was on the agenda last year. And what this is about is that if mental health wants to add more wellness centers, they have to, the county has to purchase those buildings. They are not allowed to lease them, and so that's a financial constraint to them. So even if they have the operational dollars for staff, if they don't have the capital dollars to actually purchase buildings, they're not able to do that. So that's recommended as an item to remain on the platform. The last one is a suggestion for a new addition, and this is transportation, and Supervisor Worley, you mentioned it earlier in this meeting, California transportation funding is in quite a hole. Estimates have been, you know, eight billion dollars in backlog of infrastructure needed annually, and your board is aware that the Transportation Commission just sent a letter saying they were going to deprogram seven hundred and fifty-four million dollars worth of projects. Over the next five years, sixty million dollars of those projects are into Lary County. CSAC is working hard on this, RCRC is working hard on this issue. CSAC has a list of several recommendations. I did discuss those recommendations with TCAG to make sure that they were in agreement with them. The suggestion that came out of that conversation is that the board would support, you know, a new transportation funding package, a sustainable, long-term package, and that a few key points would be included in that. The first is to fix the annual price-based excise tax adjustment by resetting the tax and indexing the rate to inflation, and that's just the conversation about, you know, the rates not keeping up with inflation, so there's just not enough money. The second point would be equal revenue sharing between the systems on any new revenues for road maintenance and rehabilitation. So if there's a new fund or a new funding sort of set up, we would want to make sure that at least fifty percent of that went to local governments to use, not all of it to Caltrans. The third is to use truck weights for transportation projects, and that just has to do with the fact that the truck weight fee was moved and was not being used for the intended purpose. And then, of course...
Debbie, before you move on beyond that, at the CSAC Board of Directors meeting, we had the Director of Finance at the meeting, and at this point, that is an absolute no-go with the governor and the legislature, because that's been high on the list of trying to get the weight fees back to payment, back to what they were intended for, which was, you know, damaged the roads, and now it's being used to pay the bonds that were used for transportation. And just, I mean, that was a question asked of him, and, I mean, we can keep it on our list, obviously, but just wanted to share with the board that that is going to be a real tough nut to crack.
And CSAC has that on their, they have a list of requirements, and then they have a list of sort of, I guess you'd call it wishlist, and the truck weight fee was on their wishlist. So the board can certainly remove that if that's not...
I don't think we've ever backed down from an issue that was a no-go at the state. There's a lot of no-gos at the state that we still advocate for.
We will still advocate for it, but I just wanted to just alert the board to the information that I had received last Thursday. I think they need to know that all the counties are dissatisfied with that.
So in summary, there are a couple items that we do need some board direction on, and the first is the forest management. We have the designation now on the federal land. Where do we want to go from there? Do we want to ask for state funding match? Do we want to ask for continued federal proclamation of emergency?
About forest management, forest health?
Get the governor, keep the governor engaged on this, and put the pressure on the feds to do their job.
When I was up in Sacramento with the task force, you know, I promoted the concept that it would be good if the state would look at maybe using cap and trade funds to bring some money to the table with the feds, because that could help maybe redirect their resources to doing something. The idea of using state monies to also affect what's happening on federal lands, because that's going to be a big issue, we know, with the federal lands people is budget. How are we going to pay for anything? And so I think it's a good thing to keep on, have as an item for us to address in Sacramento is, you know, let's use some state funds along, you know, to try to entice the federal government to do what they should do on federal lands.
Mr. Chair, I did have one issue that I think we should add underneath the agriculture section of our platform. Obviously, the Williamson Act coming back altogether would be, in full subvention, would be fantastic, but I do think that a real legitimate ask, that's not really a big financial issue for the state, I wouldn't think, but it is big for the county, is to make sure that any cancellation fees that are sent to the state don't go there, they actually go to the counties where they're originated.
I had that written down, too.
Yeah.
I'm curious on that item for the decreased, increased dairy digester program. Are we looking, are we asking for cap and trade funds for that, or?
The request right now is to support initiatives to provide state support for the program. So it could be that state support could come in a number of ways.
Is there existing support now?
Yes, there is from the Department of Public Health. This generated from our office in that as part of the dairy cap, the state is going to be looking towards how to reduce the methane. Digesters is going to be a key component of that. So the dairy industry has requested that we advocate as strong as we can funding for digesters, and Lary County will most likely be the county in which pilot projects will occur.
I mean, the other side of that, too, is working with the air district, because we also are receiving funds, and also the, of course, I don't know what it would apply here, but we also invest in different types of things that will, that are kind of cutting-edge, how do we improve upon, you know, reductions. We recently paid for helping a dairyman to automate his system of mixing and distributing feed to his cattle. It had a tremendous reduction of energy, you know, so, and that was funded by the air district. So if we look at projects that are lacking in, you know, implementation in the sense that they're still kind of experimental and so forth, the air district can be a source of revenue.
Mr. Chairman, I think the purpose of this item is to pick specific items that we are going to discuss in Sacramento on our trip in March. This is a great list. If you presented this, I don't think we have anybody that would give us the time to even read this list, so... But I think this list should go to our lobbyist and tell him, we want a response on where these items sit in the queue of the state, and these items are of interest to us. And that's what I look for this list to do, is for our lobbyist to go to work on and give us an idea of where they're at. But coming back to what we're going to Sacramento for, obviously, everybody we talk to is going to be water, where we stand on water. Forest management, I'm going to give you my personal opinion of what I'd like to see on the list, is forest management, which includes water, includes air quality, includes a lot of things. DAX, I really want to know where we are in the funding of DAX through cap and trade and Proposition One. There's a lot of talk about the metropolitan area sticking their big hands into the trough and taking a big chunk of that DAC money, so I want to know where we are in that and how we sit. I think we sit that the definition of DAX was really not, was more set up for the valley. It ended up the valley was the main focus of DAX, and if the metropolitan area is still all the money, and the main focus of the DAX was Central Valley, which will be depleted of the money that was in those propositions, I want to know that, and I want to advocate for the DAC money to stay in, a big chunk of it in the Central Valley. Transportation, the PILT issue, widening the Highway ninety-nine, I think is a big issue to us. A lot of people don't recognize that we had made a deal with Caltrans, put our regional money on state projects, and this kills our state project on Highway ninety-nine when they killed the PILT program. We may not have time right now, but I want to address Proposition forty-seven on the effect it has on our law enforcement, our public safety. Because I heard, or read, or saw something, the state of California, the governor and the legislature is looking to expand what they're doing with Proposition forty-seven to release more people out to the local government. And that's, that's an issue that I think, I don't know how serious it is in Lary County, because we haven't got that report, but other jurisdictions are having a major problem with just forty-seven as it sits. So I would like to give the legislature, our people, a heads up, we're not in favor expanding any, any part of Proposition forty-seven. That's my say.
Mr. Chair, I agree with what the governor has suggested, or governor, I mean, future Governor Ashida. But one thing I do think, I think we should have that Williamson Act ask as a, it's just a simple one-line ask, and I think it's very important, it's something that would benefit our county and would just be a simple one-liner that is something that I think could be easily carried by the legislature.
Yeah, I think we've been talking about the Williamson Act for so many years, a one-liner is enough.
I was going to suggest, I think, I agree with what Supervisor Ashida said. I think that this list has been carefully crafted, you know, coming from our different department heads and CIO's office, some of which we are not as familiar with. And so when I think about, what I think Supervisor Ashida is saying is we need to prioritize, right? So when we go into legislators' offices, what are your three biggest items? And I don't disagree with the list that Supervisor Ashida has brought forward, but I don't want to leave off the table. There may be things from Health and Human Services for which I'm not as familiar with that they're big-ticket items, a lot of money attached to them, a good chance of getting some, you know, some real, you know, benefit by our advocating for them. I don't want to leave those off. So I think we have to rely, to a certain extent, from Debbie, your perspective and coming from the CIO's office, our department heads, what are the big-ticket items that we can hopefully have the biggest impact on when we get to Sacramento? And we want to make sure that they're in our top list, not just our own priorities. We have, I don't disagree with the items that Supervisor Ashida said, but I mean, there's, it's like, there's water, and then there's like two or three subsets that we need to talk about. Those are, I mean, there's a lot more here. There's a dozen different things on water, but I think every eyes are going to glaze over if we try to address all of those. We've got to have item number one, item number two, you know, water, forest health, maybe there's a Health and Human Services thing. We need to be sure we have the top items in not just our own personal preferences, but based upon what's best for the county, especially budgetarily, so that's my take on it.
I would, from a health standpoint, the recommendation would be the foster care issue. The others, like you said, are also very important, but the foster care issue has the potential to be very, very expensive and a very difficult future challenge for the county if it's not addressed.
And there, I think we should prepare the paperwork, you know, the story, where we've come from, what the growth has been, what the projections are, what it means for the county, I mean, just so that we can make a great story for them.
You know, I want to offer something to Health and Human Services that I'm really concerned about is the, the... No, not the reimbursement rate, is the Porterville Development Center. What are we going to do with these mentally disabled people, severely disabled people? Where are they going to go? What services are going to be available to those people? Because I think that is one of the fundamental charges of government, is to take care of those type of people, and we're kicking them out the door at the Porterville facility, so where are they going?
We're going to be discussing that on Friday, and Supervisor Ashida and I will both be in that meeting, and hopefully someone from Health and Human Services.
If there are no further comments, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, let me just say thank you very much for your comments and your input. I also want to thank Debbie for your hard work and excellent presentation, and thank you for the ultramarine blue.
Need a motion then to approve the list that we're looking for?
And a motion to approve it as modified by you.
I would still move.
Okay, moved by Supervisor Worley?
I'll second.
Seconded by Supervisor Vanderpool. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Debbie.
County Council, we have need for a closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. We have items A through R in your board's closed session agenda and addendum, and I do anticipate an announcement.
Okay, thank you.
This part of the meeting is adjourned, and we will go to closed session.
You should send me the dates. If it's here, I'll try to go. Is this April? Oh, of course.
Oh, I'm sorry. Items L and N is in Nancy. Announcing on a closed session today, February twenty-third, twenty sixteen, Kathleen Bales Island County Council, in the matter of item L on the board's closed session agenda, Katar Skia versus County of Tularay, at all, the board voted to provide a defense with a reservation of rights in that matter to the county and named county defendants on the motion of Supervisor Vanderpool, seconded by Supervisor Worley, on a unanimous vote. In the matter of Montana versus County of Tularay, item N is in Nancy on the board's closed session agenda. The board voted on motion of Supervisor Vanderpool, seconded by Supervisor Ashida, on a unanimous vote to provide a defense to the county and all named county defendants with a reservation of rights, county employee defendants with a reservation of rights, excuse me. There are no other announcements. I'm assuming they're not going to hire somebody today. Because that would have to be announced if they...